Good morning. This is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Public Review Session, February 8th, 2022. There is no public testimony during this review session. Please do not call in yet. We will begin with the special order calendar, new cases, item number 251957BZ, 2071 Victory Boulevard Staten Island.
We have proof of service of initial application and have notice of hearing through officials. Community Board recommends approval. Commissioners should note, because I was a little confused, that the previously approved plans are in the void folder. If you couldn't find them, they're in the void folder. Sort of note to the project managers, be careful not to put things in the void folder that are not replicated in the main folder. This is an application for an extension of term that expires in June 192023, and that was filed on July 20th, 21. So more than one year prior to the expiration of the term. So oddly, a waiver must be requested under our rules 107.3B2. Not sure why we have waivers for early filing. You would think that would be encouraged, but anyway. This is also an application for an extension of time to obtain a certificate of occupancy that is overdue by almost 10 years. Request for a waiver under section 1-07.3D2 is required. And it's another question about our rules. It seems to allow for indefinite an extension time to obtain a CO. So I also don't understand that, but anyway. All project managers should be aware that the compliance charts must reference all of the BSA resolutions. The compliance chart here only references scattered conditions that are not specifically tied to a dated resolution, but the statement of fact seems to have been improved and corrects that. So the compliance chart should have done what the statement of facts does. In addition, all project managers should be aware that a simple statement of compliance is not adequate. You can't just say complies. Compliance must be demonstrated by proof in the form of photos, Lumen spread diagrams and plans. In this case, only a chart was provided. So the applicant must provide a compliance chart citing all the conditions from all resolutions and provide visual proof of compliance. The resolution provided includes a GCL 36 approval, calendar number 102-58-A, to allow curb cuts in the street widening line of Victory Boulevard. The statement of facts makes no mention of it, nor do prior resolutions. So there were no prior resolutions provided, so we need to clear that up. We need to have a full statement of the board history and all the resolutions related to that. The 1985 resolution makes reference to an A case for this site under calendar number 833-84A. So we need a copy of that resolution. And again, project managers and applicants should read all of the resolutions and make sure the application is complete with all resolutions included. I learned this by reading the resolutions, so it's not mysterious. It's not access to a mysterious file somewhere. Our council should note the full site history in our next resolution. In the notice of comments, the project manager asked the applicant why no certificate of occupancy renewal was obtained since the expiration of the last CO in 2013. The answer from the applicant cannot be, "We didn't work on this case, so we don't know." If the property owner is the same as in 2013, which it appears to be, then you ask your client and you find out what's been going on. Can't just say, "I don't know. I didn't work on it." I'd like to know, therefore, what's holding up obtaining the certificate of occupancy? Has one been applied for? I see no indication of that on biz, but I know there's a shift to DOB now, and I have to admit, I need a lesson in how you DOB now. There is no need to wait for the extension, since the use is permitted until 2023. So you can file your alteration type 1 application now, and you need to. I see dumpsters sitting out in the open outside of an enclosure. We need an enclosure. It's unsightly for the dumpsters to just be sort of hanging out like that. This site is immediately adjacent to residential uses in an R31. I see not even a blade of grass to respond to the residential character of the neighborhood or to soften the relationship of this commercial use to the residential neighbors. And there's plenty of room to install a planting bed along the residential property line and plant a dense buffer of something like Arbor V-Tie, something that would create a dense buffer. To make matters worse, the properties behind the subject use and behind the adjacent residential property that fronts on Bradley are being illegally used as junk or automotive storage, which is not related, the ownership is not related to disownership. But I have requested that our compliance officer contact DOB to inspect those other two sites. This frankly is an ongoing theme of mine, which is made possible by Google Satellite. I kind of look at the site and see what the adjacencies are. And since I know the zoning district by virtue of Handy Zola, I can see exactly where you've got a non-complying site in relation to the subject site. That's why I'm noticing things. And so, and you know, my theme is, how is it fair that people have to put up with such affronts to their neighborhoods and their peaceful enjoyment of their residential properties? It's just not fair. The applicant should provide photos of the perimeter of the site, looking at all perimeter views along the property lines, and then turn around and look back at the building from the property lines. And really, our project managers should be asking for these photos as a matter of course in their notice of comments. It's an easy thing to request. Perimeter photos, looking at the property line and turn around and look back inside the property from the perimeter. That gives us the best idea of what's going on at the site and then a key map to indicate where those photos were taken. I'm particularly interested in what's going on in the far right corner, where photos reveal an open wire fence. I'd like to understand what that is. And then photos, and I said, photos need to be keyed to the plan. For some reason, the applicant uses the 2012 Lumen spread diagram in the proposed set. We need a new Lumen spread diagram to see what the situation is today. The diagram must comply with our administrative notice, so it's not modeled. It's actual onsite meter readings. But specifically, we are interested in the Lumen spread at and just over the residential property lines. So it's like 15 feet from the property line on the site and then five feet over the property line along the adjacent site and at the top of the fence. So in five-foot increments. And then, and again, our project managers should be asking for these in the NOCs, in their notice of comments. Other than faded striping, the site otherwise looks good, provided the air and vacuum pumps are indeed not adjacent to residential uses, which is not particularly clear from what I can understand in looking. Those are my comments. And yeah, it doesn't appear that there's any in-ground disturbance required for this site, so there's no additional seeker review. Okay, Vice Chirshonda.
Thank you. Based on all the submissions that I've reviewed and the photographs and Google area maps, it seems the overall site is in good condition and seems to be in compliance with prior grants, except securing the renewal of the CO. And with regards to, I was trying to locate where the air pumps and the vacuum pumps are. They are located along the commercial property line and where the dumpsters are. So my only suggestion would be that, since the existing trash dumpsters are located along the commercial lot line, provide like an OPEC fenced area, similar to the ones that we reviewed for a project yesterday. I think the Farmers Boulevard one to contain the trash dumpsters at its current location. Other than that, I was satisfied with the application.
Okay, Commissioner Otley-Brown.
Aside from putting a trash enclosure in, I have no other questions.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sheta.
Thank you, Chair. I second all of your comments. I just want to correct something you mentioned, that the expiration is June 19. I did read in the statement of facts that it's May 19, 23.
So I'm not, I think I got it from the resolution. So.
If you got it from the resolution, then maybe you're right. I got it from the statement of facts and it mentions May, not June.
Okay, so we just need to check that, because I'm not sure what's the answer here now. I don't have, I didn't cut and paste that little section, I don't think. Wait a second. Received June 28.
I don't know, the lineups says May 19.
Oh, it does? All right, anyway, so that may be checked. Firing is May 19. Okay, so let's check that, because I think I got it from the resolution, but I'm not sure. So the applicant should check. Okay, thank you. All right, thanks. And Commissioner Shabetta.
Thank you, Chair. I visited this site. Unfortunately, it was on Friday. It was a rainy day. So I wasn't able to see whether there is any cracks in the asphalt or anything, but I can say that it was running, the operation was running smoothly, and I have nothing more to add.
Okay, thank you.
Move on?
Yeah.
Item number 215899BZ, 18-10 Utopia Parkway Queens.
Okay, we have proof of service of initial application and have notice of hearing through officials, although there are no notice requirements for extensions of time. Community Board waived its recommendation. The application is being filed, perhaps as an amendment as well, to make minor changes to comply with ADA requirements. I'm not really sure whether it needs to be filed as an amendment, because it's really very minor. And it wasn't clear to me from the language in the statement of facts whether they were filing as an amendment. So that should be clarified. And this is kind of just an aside, because I do read all the resolutions. I was reading enviously the 1959 resolution, which says, "The exterior of the accessory building shall be redesigned to conform with the architecture of the dwelling buildings in the neighborhood. That the working drawings shall be submitted to this board for approval before they are submitted to the Department of Buildings." Imagine. Anyway, although this is an application requesting more time to complete construction and obtain a certificate of occupancy, there is no information in the statement of facts about what remains to be done to complete construction or to obtain the certificate of occupancy, notwithstanding the modifications to the ramp and striping for the ADA access. So please explain, because putting in a ramp won't prevent you from getting a CO. So I actually don't know what the issue is here. And there is happily a submission with photos indicating compliance with some of the conditions. The sidewalks have been replaced, and there are pretty small signs, very small signs, prohibiting sidewalk parking. It isn't clear where they are actually located, though, and they're not indicated on the plan. So please show them on the plan and say, indicate what they say. And it looks like the dumpster enclosure was, in fact, constructed, and the site looks pretty good. To clarify for our council for the next resolution, because I read the most recent resolution, the term is knee wall, quote unquote. It's a term of art, knee wall, not a knee-high wall, which makes me think of those socks that we used to wear in elementary school. So it's a knee wall, so please correct that. And the image provided doesn't appear to show the knee wall actually repaired or the bulging fence repaired. So that needs to be checked. It actually looks like that's still in need of repair. I didn't see photos of the currently, of the security cameras that are referred to in the conditions, but the landscaping is in place and looked really good in July. The previously approved plans were missing from the folder and were added on Friday. So for anybody who was looking for those plans, they're now in the folder. I'm looking at the maneuverability diagram with the modified head-in ADA parking. And again, I rely on the drivers and on the commission, but it seems rather strange as a sort of jutting out head-in parking space and maybe prone to getting, having accidents, getting like, it's the only car that is protruding past the other cars when it's parked like that. I'm curious whether it was DOB review that requested this head-in parking for the ADA space. What was the motivation for changing that? And those are my comments. Vice Chirshonda.
Thank you. From the photos provided, it seems the overall site is in excellent condition. And also from the site photos that were submitted dated 8/10/2021, it seems, and it seems the canopy and the ADA access were provided. So I wasn't quite sure with regards to the statement. So my question was only, has the applicant filed for CO? That's all.
You weren't sure, like, what's left to be done?
Yes, exactly. Because from the photos, it seems all is, all the items are in place.
Yes, I agree. Thank you. Commissioner Otley-Brown.
I have no questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Sheta?
Nothing additional to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Shabetta.
Thank you, Chair. I have nothing to add.
Okay, thank you.
Item number 227211BZ, 10106 Astoria Boulevard Queens.
Okay, we have proof of service of initial application and have notice of hearing through officials. We don't yet have the community board resolution, because they're scheduled to meet tomorrow, it looks like. When the board last heard this case in 2011, there were many problems noted in the resolution, problems with the site, not the least of which was the lapse of the variance 17 years before. I note that this application before us was filed early, and the CO is current. So maybe there are a new leaf that's not similar to what happened in 2011. The first image I see shows graffiti all over the wall of the adjacent building that frames the subject site. Graffiti, graffitiists can't do this unless, can't actually do that graffiti work unless they access the subject site and the neighbor can't clean that wall without getting permission from the subject site's owner. So to my thinking, keeping the wall clean is this property owner's responsibility and what may have been referred to by the prior board in its prior resolution of needing to clean the wall, keep the graffiti off the walls. In any event, this property owner and the neighbor have to come to some sort of agreement to clean the graffiti as soon as it's up. You can't just let it sit there and say it's the other guy's problem, because it really is a blight and it conveys an image about the neighborhood that's negative, that's decay. The tenants in the one-story building, commercial building that, onto which the graffiti is painted, appear to include lawyers. So they should understand their responsibility to maintain their site and our requirement that the site, that graffiti be removed from the walls. In fact, maybe we should give them a copy of the resolution, something like that. I see mention of outreach to the neighbor. In the statement of facts, it says that when there's graffiti, they ask the neighbors, but not any indication of the neighbor's response shown by the photos. So you could ask the neighbors, "Please clean it," and then they don't do it. And then the graffiti really feels like it's associated with this site, because you have to go on to this site to paint it. So please. The landscaping along 31st Avenue looks very good, and the buffering trees between the rear of the building and the wall on 31st Avenue have proved to be very effective and a great example of how to shield the neighborhood from the use. But apparently, the real motivation for landscaping the area was to prevent trash buildup, and that also appears to have been a successful measure to accomplish this, in addition to what appears to be proper maintenance of the site by the property owner. So I think it's actually really, they're very nice trees also. They're kind of fluffy. So they look really nice over the brick wall, in terms of, from the other side, from the neighbor's side. None of the plans, though, show the dimensions of the landscaped areas, so please indicate that on the drawings. The narrower landscaping strips along 101st Street, and especially along the side property line, however, are sparse in places and mostly dirt, from which at least on 101st Street spring the trees. The open portion should be improved and the work should be done as soon as planting season allows. And I understand that the taller trees may be shading planting, but there are types of shrubs and low plants that thrive in shade conditions. In fact, I prefer them, because it's really filtered light. So please do that, because this really looks like dirt, and then you look up and there's a tree. So applicant should provide a landscaping plan that indicates the type of existing planting and the proposed, and the proposed planting, as well as dimensions for the landscaping beds, as I mentioned. The proposed plans already show the existing planting conditions, so it's clear where more planting is actually needed. Having said all that about the need for more landscaping, I do have to say, this is one of the greener automotive establishments we've seen at the BSA, and it really should be a model. So it actually, from a distance, it's really nice. It's just when you get closer to it, you see that it's, you know, trees and dirt. I'd like the applicant to provide photos of the southeast corner of the site, facing both the south and the east property lines, and then turn around and face the walls of the building. I see the notice of comment asked for these photos, and we got some, but not all. So I didn't find, for example, a photo of the street trees, as promised in the response to the notice of comments. Maybe it's there. I didn't find it. And those, oh, and then I noticed, it's just a question. There's one photo that's provided that shows the sidewalk on 31st Avenue, and it's a wide sidewalk where you have two kind of paving conditions, one of which is kind of a rough paving, like it's not finished. I'd like to understand what the story is there. 101st Street, on the other hand, is consistently paved for its depth, for its width. Okay, those are my comments. Vice Chirshonda.
Thank you. Let me just go back. The compliance chart is not complete. It should include all the prior grants. It just includes the 1959. And though these conditions are listed in the statement of fact, it should be in the compliance chart. And other than that, looking at the site, I've driven by this site before. I didn't go specifically for the site visit, but I've always seen it in very good condition. And from the Google Street View and the photos submitted, it seems like they are very well maintained. The owner maintains the site very well, and the landscaping is very well maintained, as you have mentioned. So I'm totally satisfied with the submission. I have no comments. If there is any suggestion that I would ask the applicant to consider is that the curb cut that is on the 101st Street, and I'm just going to the photo, that is on the, I think, the furthest most away from the intersection of Astoria and 101. Oh, sorry, the curb cut that's on Astoria Boulevard, furthest away from the intersection of 101 and Astoria can do with some improvements, some repair. So that would be my only suggestion. Otherwise, the site was in very good condition, and I have no additional comments.
So in other words, the slope has cracks in it, or the ramp has cracks? Or the cut itself, the curb is broken?
I don't think the curb is broken. I think there are cracks in the ramp.
Okay.
So just based on the photos that I'm seeing, since I haven't done the site visit, I cannot confirm it.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Otley-Brown?
I agree with you that the graffiti should be removed in a timely fashion by the owners of this site. And also, I agree with you on the landscaping. The trees are all mature and tall, and that leaves the gaps closer to the ground, so some ground cover would be great. That's it.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you, Chair. The only comment I have is regarding cracks in the rap. I've been through the site, and yes, I confirmed that there are some cracks in the concrete and in the sidewalk itself. The asphalt looks okay, but maybe it's going to need some, like, care very soon. Other than that, I have no other comments. Thank you.
Okay, so care soon means not today, or it means in two years? Like, what does it mean? It's just, in other words, good enough for now?
It's good for now, but I believe, since they are taking care of the site, I wouldn't push them to do something now.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shabetta?
Thank you, Chair. I'm just, I'd just like to know what the community board has to say, but other than that, I have no other questions on this.
Okay.
Okay, next item, item number 23, zoning calendar, continued hearing items. Item number 23 is 2019265BZ, 60371A, 35 Gifford Lane, Staten Island.
So I'm super interested in the commissioner's take on what we received. So hold on a second. I'm still scrolling. So we last heard this in May, with one adjournment since. And I have to say that I was shocked, offended, astonished by the submission. We had said categorically no to using Sampson as a vehicular access point to the site. We had been at this through, I think this is the fifth actual hearing, and we worked from many, many hearings in response, both to the community's concerns, our own concerns about using Sampson as a way of circulating to the site or from the site because of fears about putting too much traffic on those little side streets. And the applicant each time would make up some excuse for why they had to have access. And the excuses were each debunked by conversation. One of the excuses was that fire department needed access to the site for firefighting, and fire department then told us directly that they never bring their apparatus onto the site. They always fight from the street, so there was no reason for emergency vehicles to come onto the site from Sampson. So by the last hearing, we had agreed that there would only be what I call person gate, person with gate to access Sampson, and that the fire department would have a special key so that they could come onto it if they needed to in an emergency from the Sampson side for firefighting. Right? So, and we also talked about the many, many, many houses of worship in New York City and elsewhere on Earth that only have one vehicular or even one vehicular, or actually often no vehicular entrance to the site. The site, so what's, so the applicant has decided, and it seems like, I have to say, applicants represent- And it seems like, I have to say, applicants representatives, um, cover letter didn't seem like the representative was. Uh, let's say supportive of this approach, um, to essentially going back to the original plan. And, um, and insisting that the only way that this operation is going to work is with access to Sampson. So that, um, the parking area at the rear that's on Lakota and Sampson. That is used by a community center during the week would then be used by, um, this house of worship on Sundays. So, um. What's, what's frustrating is the, 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 the many, many hours that we spent on this. And the, um, belief that the, that the applicant was going to, um. Was responding to our direction, even though they pushed back on almost everything. Everything took two, two or three hearings, getting adequate landscaping, getting the building to be adequately modified. So that it would be aesthetically borderline acceptable in the neighborhood, in a residential neighborhood. Each one of those things was, was painful, pulling teeth. And so now we have the, um, the, ha, the director of the House of Worship. Um, with a twenty page liturgical sermon. Um, about the reason for what's, what I believe is called a parking ministry. Um, I know a little bit about actual parking ministries. We used to have in the nineteen fifties and sixties, um, drive-in churches. Those were actual parking ministries where like a drive-in movie theater, people would come. These, this is a parking lot, it's not the same thing, so, um, so anyway, um. When I started to look at, because I, I don't actually know what to do and I'm very interested in hearing what other commissioners think. Um, when I started to look at that area behind, I start looking at the Zola maps. And Zola helps you with ownership easily, so you can click on each little tax lot and find out who owns what. And I was trying to understand that parking situation that's adjacent to that community center. And it appears that a number of the, the places where you see cars parked are not, um. Are not part of a map street. They're actually, um, MTA property, they're sort of like the, the berms that are adjacent to the railway. And so essentially what's going on is people are parking in something that's not being enforced by the MTA. Because, but it's, it seems like it's MTA property. And I don't know, there's also some few spaces right in front of the community center. Because I don't really have, um, a clear understanding of where the parking is relative to where the tax lots are. Um, it's not clear to me that, that the parking is in, um, city-owned, let's say. DOT managed map street as opposed to MTA owned property, which is not the same thing. Or private property. So the expectation of being able to park there on the part of this, um, applicant. May not be, um, borne out by, borne out by sort of legality. So that's the first thing, I don't know if those are legal parking spaces. The, the other part of it is, from the very beginning, when we first looked at the demand studies. We heard that, um, there was going to be a demand of, I forget the number, Jelenos number, a hundred eight cars or something like that. And so we said, so that's more cars than the twenty nine spaces that you're providing on site. Which by the way is all that zoning requires, so the parking requirement is being fulfilled on the site. Um, we said, where are you going to park the other seventy cars or seventy five cars? And the answer was, we're going to run a shuttle bus. And we said, what's the shuttle bus going to do? And they said, the shuttle bus will run to the train station to pick people up and will also. Run to a municipal lot that is somewhere, we don't know. I think in the E A S it actually indicates the municipal lots somewhere. And we said, okay, we need a restrictive declaration attesting to those lots. And, and the hours of the shuttle bus. And we kept asking for the restrictive deck and we didn't get it until this submission. However, in this submission, the, the, the cover letter or whatever it is, the, the memorandum. Um, states that the shuttle bus would simply drive around the corner to Sampson and Lakota. And pick people up who are parking there and drive them back around the other way. So all of a sudden we learn that the shuttle bus actually has no purpose because it's really just driving around the corner. It's not going some distance to pick people up at some remote municipal lot or the train station. So then I look at the, the restricted declaration and I'm like, what's the point of this? It's not actually, it's not real, it's a misrepresentation of what their intentions were. And so, you know, I'm having a lot of problems with this. So, so it, it basically means that the, the shuttle bus is meaningless or isn't, doesn't exist. So, um, and we've been in hearings, I note, for nearly two years and I feel like we're back to zero. But one of the things I want to say also is that, um, DOT recently asked to look at this application. And we always respond to them when DOT asks. And when we were thinking that the parking is being handled by shuttle buses. So then DOT would have sort of a different review. With this proposal, DOT is going to have to look at the impact on the neighborhood. Of, um, cars coming out onto Sampson and, um, parking in that area and what that does. So that's the first thing, so DOT now is going to be reviewing the latest submission which they've received. And, um, maybe asking for additional, um, data on, on demand. Because we didn't question the demand study, but DOT in fact may. And then the other part of it is there's an assumption on the part of this applicant. That the only time that there would be people coming here is Sunday when the community center. Um, is not op, is not open. But as we know from every other house of worship that we've worked with and we've worked with, I hazard to say hundreds. Um. Life events happen during the week as well. Events of all kinds happen during the week, once you have a new space that's big enough to handle the whole congregation. More and more things will happen at the big space. And so the reliance on the parking on Sampson will now put pressure on the community center. Which has been relying on those parking spaces for its own use all of this time. So, um, so, um, and so now I'm going to hand it over to the other commissioners. But I know that, um, Commissioner Shabeta took a site visit on Sunday. Um, so I'm gonna go directly to him and then to, um, the Vice Chair.
Uh, thank you Chair, um, so I, I did do a site visit on Sunday, also did one on Wednesday. Uh, on Wednesday, on Wednesday, this, this is a very, very, uh, busy area. Um, and, and I don't believe it could, that, that it will be served. By having a gate open on Sampson on, on, on the weekdays. But I'll, I'll circle back to that in a little bit. I did go there on Sunday, on Sunday, it's a very different scene, uh, there are more open spaces. And, and, and it looks like, uh, you know, that, I, I want to preface this with saying. I too was very frustrated in seeing this application and, and the form it came in. We had, uh, we had stated, uh, a great deal, we spent hours in hearings, working on this application. Uh, to receive what we received, I, that, that was, uh, I, very troubling. I tried to separate that, um, when I did my site visit. And I do see that there is, these lots are empty, they're not being used, uh, by the community center on, at least on this Sunday. Um, there are also, I did see some street parking, uh, throughout the area. Uh, that being said, if we were to agree. That they can have this exit out on Sampson and, and, and also that we would have to have some written agreement. That says that they're permitted to park in the location that they say they're permitted, that they say they're permitted to park in. We'd also have to have some sort of arrangement that would ensure that that gate would stay closed during the weekdays. Because this is certainly not something that could be used during the weekdays. I would propose, uh, if that were be, the, the case if the board were to go that way, I would propose that. We condition this grant on that, um, on the, the notion that, uh, this gate is closed. We put a sign there and I have great respect for this community board and, 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 and I think that they'd be happy. I think they, they would be okay with the sign saying if we, they find this gate open during the week. Call B S A and we'll have a compliance hearing and we can revoke this, this grant. Um, I think that might be the way. Uh, obviously, we would like to see a photograph of something if this gate is open during the week, something along those lines, some evidence of it. But. If the, you know, if we're going to assume they're going to be good actors, which I'm not sure the record reflects that. Um, if we're going to assume they're going to be good actors, this may be a way to accommodate both the needs of this, of the center. As well as the concerns of the community. I'd like to hear the input of the other commissioners, um, but I, I. I, I think that if we do it in a way that we have. The ability to bring this back and they know the, the ramifications of, of, of violation. Uh, this, and how much that will cost them, I think that might be, uh, 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 a, a safe middle ground.
Trying to imagine, you know, the, because I've, I've been kind of in a certain way wishing that we could. Um, have an enforcement authority where we actually can issue violations. Um, but, um, without short of that, it's really difficult. Because I don't know that D O B issues violations for non-compliance with things that don't look like a violation of. Of code or zoning or anything like that. And whether they would issue a violation for, you know, a Wednesday, I, I don't, I don't.
Well, I'm, I'm not saying, I'm, I'm not saying D O B, I'm saying, you know, there, we had a case in the past where, uh, Commissioner Otley Brown. Uh, noticed a non-compliance and we, we revoked that grant. I, I think that, and, and that.
Uh, no, 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 but to that point, she noticed a building under construction, which was not what we had permitted, right? So then D O B came and looked and said, wow, that doesn't look like the approved plans. So they were able to issue a stop work order. So that's part of it, right? We don't have any cease and desist, I don't think, um.
We could revoke our grant.
Yeah.
We could revoke our grant and that, there, you know, violations from D O B, uh, can be expensive. But revoking our grant has its own financial repercussions.
Maybe, yeah, or they just go ahead and they continue to do whatever. But okay, let's hear from the others, thank you, I do appreciate it, it was helpful to go on the site visit on Sunday and on Wednesday. Um, Vice Chirshonda?
Um, thank you, uh, Commissioner Shabeta, uh, for your site visit. Uh, I think the information you provided was very helpful. And it's kind of, uh, I think we are thinking along the same line and so hear me out. Um, and that is, um, the, so I'm gonna read what I have to say. Um. The applicant has, uh, revised the application, uh, in terms of going back to the original, uh, format. Uh, the letter provided by the church, uh, I have to say, I looked through the earlier submissions to see where it was mentioned. Uh, and, uh, maybe it was my fault, but the recent submission with its graphics was very clear. In explaining the need for an access, um, gate on Sampson and how it would address, um, the primary concern, um, of the community board. That is minimizing vehicular traffic and I would add also pedestrian traffic as well through the residential streets. Um, I, I just, as I was reviewing this, I had to be extremely mindful that no two sites are same. And how we determine each site is based on its programmatic needs, location, solutions, unique to the site. So, um, keeping that in mind, as I, um, um, I was looking at the site and based on my, um, a year ago site visit. Uh, what I, what I was beginning to think is if I were to go there, what would, what would a congregant do? What, what would a congregant look for? So in reality, regardless of whether a pedestrian gate or a vehicular gate is provided at the Sampson Street entrance. The most likely place for congregants to park would be at the end of Schley Avenue along Schley, um, uh, bend, uh, to Sampson. Which is fronting the railroad and, um, as I also looked through the Zola thing, it is not, uh. Uh, necessarily a city on site, but it seems to be maintained by the city, so. It is far away from the residential homes. It, um, and, uh, I had gone there on a Sunday also, but it was, uh, in the peak of, um, uh, uh, COVID. So I, I'm glad that, uh, Commissioner Shabeta went this Sunday and kind of reaffirmed what I had seen. Um, that it is underutilized on Sundays and when the daycares and the senior care facility across the site, um, is closed. Um, so the applicant's suggestion, um, to use Gifford as the primary entrance and exit. To the site and to use the Sampson Street Gate only to park vehicles along this portion of the street. Will reduce, I do believe, will reduce traffic circulation through the residential neighborhoods. Not just this particular neighborhood, but also the residential neighborhood, um, that is located on the other side of Gifford. Um, and, and the immediate areas, uh, as I, uh, as I would call them. And, um, and, and, and this would, and, and the, the applicant is using the attendance. To guide these drivers to these locations, um, and, uh, you know. I, for one, I think this definitely addresses, takes away any vehicular parking, even if we were to put a gate there. Uh, even if we were to put no gates there or, or not allow any gates. Congregants will go park there and then they will, uh, walk back up, um, Schley or Sampson. To, uh, to enter the facility. I'm not sure we are avoiding the situation that the community is asking us to not allow. So this would be the outcome that would minimize that vehicular and pedestrian traffic through the residential street. And, uh, and similarly, after the services, these vehicles will again go through the Sampson Gate and exit through the Gifford Gate. And, uh, this way it would minimize the vehicular traffic flow. Um, now, of course, all of this relies on, um, how do we ensure, um, and I agree with, uh, uh, Commissioner Shabeta's suggestion. Is how do we ensure that the gate remains closed on non, um, you know, the Sundays? And that would be, uh, I would say for two signs, one on the inside of the site, one on the outside. The inside side is for the congregants and for the administrator, everybody to know that this gate remains closed except on Sunday. And maybe possibly, I don't know, I'm gonna throw it out there on a major holiday like Christmas or so, but. The, it remains closed, um, and that sign is there on both sides. This is, this way the neighbors know, if they see the gate is open on, on a weekday, um, then they notify. And who the notifying agency, it could be multiple, it could be DOT, it could be, uh, sorry, D O B. It would be, since we have a compliance officer, call our compliance officer, bring it, bring it to their attention. So the compliance officer goes to the site and, uh, we call them in for a compliance hearing. So there are many tools that we have and we should exercise those and not second guess the well-meaning intent of the applicant. Um, so I would be, um, okay with this. And, uh, I would of course want the applicant to provide a little bit more detail on the operational plan. I, uh, looked through the, uh, restrictive deck, um, that has been submitted and in that the applicant is referring to the shuttle van. Um, that would loop between the premise and the municipal parking facilities. Um, and the, and the Great Kills, uh, State Staten Island Railroad Station. So they've been very clear identifying the alternate locations where the excess parked, uh, vehicles would be parked. And how they will be looping through them and, and not having to loop through the Sampson Avenue to pick up the people. Who would have parked there when you can see the site right across the fence. Um, so I would be okay with that and I would like the applicant to provide a little bit more, uh, clarity into the app operation. And integrate that into the restrictive deck and it should be part of our conditions. Um, you know, as I've mentioned, uh, last year, it's the location of the parking, um, that is being proposed by the applicant on this site. Um, is, is ideal, is far away from the residential use, it's a Butza Railroad. And based on what the board has recommended in terms of, uh, softening the edges. Pro, in providing more landscaping, the applicant has, uh, agreed to do that and has provided those landscaping detailing. So I was satisfied with that. There's one question I have which has nothing to do with parking and that is, as I was. There's one question I have, which has nothing to do with parking, and that is, as I was reviewing the uh DEP sewer easement. Um, in that it says, um, uh, the DEP's comment letter says, all dimensions. Uh requirements of DP should be included in the site plan. And I looked through the EXC one dash one s- a sheet. Uh, that was submitted with the one nineteen twenty-two DP response letter. It wasn't clear um exactly where the thirty-five foot wide corridor is located. Um, I I saw one line, but I did not see the full depth of thirty-five foot, so if the applicant could. Um, kind of improve the line weight to show that exactly, that would be helpful. Um, and other than that, I I would like to hear the other commissioners also on this matter. Thanks.
Um, I just want one comment, the you you won't be able to regulate how people leave once at the end of a sermon. They'll just drive on the road, so that that part you're not going to be able to eliminate.
I think we were, I I, uh, Madam Chair, I with. Due respect, I do disagree on that. I think this is where the attendant is going to come in and and the applicant should provide a very robust. Operational plan in terms of how the attendant will ensure. That people will not exit through Schley or Sampson and will go through Sampson. There are ways, it's not a very long street. And and if you if you're providing three attendants, you can make make sure they stand right at the mouth of Schley and uh Sampson and tell them, no, go this way. And we have asked congregants, the other facilities to pre uh to make sure they tell their uh employees, their members and others, and in this case. They can do the same, so I I believe the applicant, um. If means well for the community and is trying to find a solution that will be least disruptive to the community. Um, they can provide a very thorough operational plan that will ensure that that will not happen. And that they will in make sure that the congregants are fully aware of their responsibilities. Not only to their congregants, but also also to the fellow neighbors that they are um o- occupying the space with for that duration.
Thank you. Um Commissioner Oatley Brown.
So I have a different take on this than everybody who has spoken. I looked at the submission and the first thing I thought to myself, I was not frustrated, I was not upset with them. What I came to the conclusion of was that this is very important to the congregation. For their own reasons, which they've made clear to us, this is super important. Important enough that they want to give it one last go and see if they can convince can convince us. So then I put that information aside and I took a look at the situation from their point of view. And the bottom line is Sampson and Schley are public streets. They are not private streets and excuse me, but the fire truck is going through, so that's probably coming in. While I'm speaking, that sound.
Oh, I thought it's going.
Terry, yeah, that's from me and it's it's gonna pass, but Sampson and Schley are public streets. And frankly, there is nothing that we. Or the neighbors or anybody can do to stop people from driving up and down public streets. It's a fact of the matter. Now, if they want to figure out some way to make those private roads. If there is some legal way to do so, then the neighborhood should pursue that, but for now, those are public streets. Which means that cars can drive by them and drive down them as many times as they want, whether they're related to this church or not. So that's something else. I put that to the side, keep that in my mind. And then I look at the uh proposal that they've put before us and I weigh that proposal and say to myself. Which one is likely to result in more cars driving up and down the street? Their proposal, in which case they're gonna try and funnel people back and forth through their site, so they don't go up and down Sampson and Schley. Or a locked gate and no car gate. Whereupon people are going to naturally drive up and down Sampson and Schley, looking for parking spots, because that's what drivers do. They don't sit there and say, well, I don't want to bother people in this private neighborhood of private homes, I'm not going to drive down these blocks because there's no gate. They're gonna be like, ooh, I think I remember there's a bunch of open spots here and they're gonna drive down that block. So. I feel that honestly, the proposal that they have put forth. Actually results in less traffic going up and down the bulk of Sampson and Schley. Looking for a parking spot, and so therefore I think that's actually a good proposal. So now, once I've made that decision that I feel it's a good proposal, the next step in response to. The Vice Chair and and Commissioner Shabeta is whether or not it makes sense to close that gate during the week. Number one, I think that it's kind of hard to monitor that. Because what you're doing is you're asking the public to become oversight and also possibly vigilantes. And that's something we don't want to encourage, we want to encourage a respect for the law. What we don't want is there to be some kind of altercation. People getting hurt, cars getting destroyed over enforcement of something that the board should, if we issue those conditions, find a way to enforce ourselves. So I wouldn't really want to put it on the community and empower them to go and enforce our. Conditions of the grant. And so therefore, for that reason, and I also take into account the fact that, yes, churches do have things going on during the week, they sure do. And there may occasionally be an event, but we have a church in our neighborhood and most churches do behave in the same fashion. In that the the bulk of the traffic is on Sunday. Their day of worship during the week, there are accessory ancillary programs that they bring a few bunches of people here and there. There are meetings, there are lectures, sometimes there's a coffee in the morning. That kind of thing, they don't bring the full body of the church in and out through those streets during the week. And the bottom line is people are going to park wherever they can park. And short of making this these streets on the back end private, there's gonna be no way to control it. We can strongly suggest to the congregation that they respect the neighbors in the way that we would for any other congregation. And we can also put in conditions that say, don't park in driveways and the such, but it really would be. Up to the congregation to actually say, we are committed to ensuring that while our parishioners use those parking spaces. Or any other legal parking spaces that they find on Sampson and Schley. We will police our congregants that they don't park in people's driveways or double park in people's driveways. That's my feeling on it, so I feel that because this is super important to the congregation, so much so that they're actually risking our ire by bringing it up again. I'm inclined to support this on some kind of a short leash of monitoring in the same way that DOT. Often monitors the traffic situation for six months after a project has been built in order to ensure. That what it thinks is going to happen is actually borne out and happens before they actually kiss it goodbye and let it go.
Interesting, okay, I I have really appreciate your A, B, C, D, E reasoning. Step one, step two, that that's very helpful, um, thank you. It's almost like you create create your own findings and then you. Check against your own findings. Thank you. Um, Commissioner Sheta.
Thank you, Chair. When when I first looked at this case, I thought that. It's closed and it's up for decision, but I realized that it's not. And I was like, oh, we started this case a long time ago and I'm not sure why it's still here. So uh this is, this is a house of worship. I I I don't think, I I will recall that any of the members of this board. Never mentioned denial on this case during any of the past uh hearings. That that applicant in in his letter is talking about. Traffic and and noise issues cannot be ground for denial. We didn't talk about denial, we've been cooperative, like to the extent possible since the beginning of this case. And and we've been supportive on this case. Like many other cases on similar uh applications. So I I'm not, I I was like shocked by the kind of language in the letter. Now, regarding that that gate issue, this is the way I would call it. From day one on this case, my gut was like, they want to use the spaces. Right outside the gate that we want to make it uh like a small gate, do you want to make it? Full access gate, that there are plenty of parking spaces on Schley Ave. Right outside. I'm okay with that, I don't think like locking this gate or making it full access gate or a small gate. Would make a difference. If somebody want to park there, he's gonna drive there, park his car. And then walk into the church, whether through the full access gate or through that. Smaller gate, the one that we want to go with or the one that they want to go with. So I don't think, I don't think, or I don't see like any significant difference actually between the two. Probably for them, it's some more flexibility in going in and out. And for us, I understand that we want to make sure that we we minimize. The nuisance and the the like the turbulence in in the area close to the there is a danger. I'm I'm okay with either proposal, I don't think even putting a condition. On locking this gate during weekdays is gonna be significant if we want to put it, I'm okay with that. But I I I believe it's it's time for this case to move forward and get done. Thank you.
Thank you, okay, I I really appreciate everybody's super careful analysis of this, um. So so thank you, and now we'll talk to the applicant. Um Sal, did you uh Commissioner Shabeta add something?
I think that, I think that. Um, I think that once DOT does its review, we'll we'll have a much better understanding. And I know I I really, uh, and being that that's the only issue that's before us, I I don't foresee it as being a very long process.
Mm-hmm, right, but w- without DOT, we can't close, so, okay, thank you. All right, yeah, thank you, everyone. Item number twenty-four, twenty twenty-one thirty-six BZ, twenty twenty ninety-eight, two forty-four Gansvort Boulevard, Staten Island. Scrolling just a second, okay, um. Want to just um alert commissioners in case when they were reviewing this, that there that the submissions. For this case are divided into two folders. Um, one is for the GCL thirty-six materials under twenty twenty dash ninety A. And the other folder is seven for the seventy-two twenty-one materials under twenty-one twenty twenty twenty-one thirty-six BZ. And if you don't look at both files, you'll be confused like I was, um. Um, because you didn't have the full story, you're like, why didn't they give me this? Because it's not relevant to the other question, that that's why. Um, so um revised plans were submitted, that reduces the length of the house. But not its relationship to Westwood and Gansvort. I'm not actually understanding the reason for that reduction in length. Um, is it to improve turning visibility onto Claremont from Westwood? No explanation is actually provided in any of the materials. If that's the reason and actually DOT um recommended in their analysis that this should be done. We should see sightline studies from all the streets. Um, and and um whether they they say on the drawings that there's no, or say on the materials that there's no fencing proposed. But fencing also could be something that interrupts um the view corridor, so we should see what the view is. And that way we can know better if there's a problem with ever putting fencing, because the drawings don't show fencing. The does that mean there needs to be a note, no fencing between here and here to pro- pro- protect the sightlines? Um, uh, the change that's done by reducing the length of the house reduces the total floor area to one thousand nine hundred ninety-two square feet. Point four four FAR, um, the last sentence in the statement of facts, so we have to read the whole thing to get to the very last sentence. Maybe implies that the reason for the reduction reduction in length is based on house size area averages. Concluding the area average is a house that's twenty-six by forty. Um, the revised statement of facts and plans state the yards are compliant. Um. Um. But, sorry. But and you but you need to rely on the front yard waiver, they say they're compliant with a zoning resolution, but they still need to rely on the front yard waiver of seventy-two dash oh one G. For Westwood, given that the entire site is in the bed of Westwood. And as I said at the last hearing, I don't agree with the applicant's statement. That the Westwood front yard as proposed would otherwise be compliant with the zoning resolution. Since the ten foot front yard that they're measuring is being measured from the curb line rather than from the edge of the sidewalk, so. Um, as described below, DOT recommends a five foot sidewalk, not the four foot shown. So the Westwood front yard distance is really five feet, so that's what we should be comparing to the neighborhood. Um, commissioners had questioned at the last hearing why the building needs to be so wide. Um, and I didn't see a response to this, the width is part of what's imposing on the side and the and the front yard. Um, on Westwood, um. With respect to that question and the front yard along Westwood issue, the front yard study does not establish. That five feet of front yard is typical along Westwood, the study actually doesn't show what's typical, so you know. The study mistakenly, I think, takes the approach that it wants, only wants to look at. Um, the few shallow front yards, but actually we just want to see kind of what's the character. So if there's lots and lots of, say, seven foot front yards, then maybe it should be seven feet, but I don't know the answer because that wasn't provided. Um, the side yard study shows um several sites on South Gannon. With shallow two to three foot side yards, um, no similar corner lots on Westwood have such shallow side yards. But again, commissioners asked why the building is so wide and we didn't get an answer to that. Um, there was a supposition by commissioners that it's because it needs three cars parked inside the garage, that's what makes it wide. Um, but again, no response. Um, two houses that were built in twenty sixteen that are shown on the on the. The tax block home size study are only twenty feet wide and they were built in twenty sixteen, so you can see that the and. That there's a big range of what's considered an acceptable width for a house here. Um, DOT submitted a significant significant comments on February third of this year. And included a recommendation that the subject portion of involved streets be de-mapped. Um, which I think is a lot to ask of a single homeowner or really in this case, a small property owner. Be- in this case, it's not really a homeowner, it's being developed by not the end user, as far as I can tell. Um, DOT comments are instructive though and should be used, I think, as a guide for our review. Um, at minimum, they say the paved road width has to be twenty-four feet plus a five foot sidewalk. Applicant did respond to those comments in the DOT letter and provided everything but the five foot sidewalk, which I think should be provided. Um, I'd also unders- tried to understand what the reason for what's called a quote curb cut a lot curb alignment waiver request. That was submitted to DOT, I I don't know what that is, why is there a curb cut curb alignment waiver? Um, they should provide also a revised builder's pavement plan to reflect the latest plan and will submit that to DOT for review. Um. And I know the house will be sprinklered, which would be a condition, okay. Um, Vice Chisanda.
Yeah. Um. I agree with you with regards to um DOT's um recommendation for a de-mapping. Um, I I don't think uh. This entire property is within the bed um of of um within the street bed. So a de-mapping would almost make the render the site. Would make the site totally not developable, um, and that to ask one homeowner to proceed with it is uh. It it's a daunting task, I mean, just trying to think of some of the other GCL projects that we have done.
Um, sorry, I I didn't understand that, why would de ma- I'm not, I'm not saying they should de map, but why would de mapping make the site underdevelopable? It would mean that site. It would mean that site is no longer in the bed of a street. So you wouldn't need it, you wouldn't need a GCL.
Sorry, I'm sorry. I was, uh, I, I, my, uh, yes, sorry. I go back. I, I was thinking from the other way. Um, but you're right. Uh, I, regardless, I mean, while it would make it buildable just for one property owner to do a portion of Westwood Avenue. Um, I don't think it serves the greater purpose of the, of the, of making the Westwood. Uh, wider. So, uh, I think this is something that should be taken by the city, since city owns most of the other lands on the other side, if they want to pursue it. Um, that's just my take. Um, but, uh, be that as it may, DOT's recommendations. Um, I thought was very helpful, uh, in how DOT views the site and. And the improvements that is needed, uh, for, uh, better, safer traffic circulation. And I agree with you also that they should provide a sightline study from all the intersections to better understand how. Um, the sightlines would be, uh, uh, retained with the placement of the building. And I, I think that is really, uh, for me is critical. And that will go to where the building sits from the Westwood intersection, from the Westwood, uh, curb line. How long should it be? How narrow it should be? Um, all of those things. Uh, I also agree that, um, the sidewalk width should be five foot. Four foot is not adequate, I think. Given the, the sidewalk on the other side of Westwood is not even existing. This would be the primary sidewalk that people would be using. So this should be five foot wide. And I, based on this, uh, other, the photos that the applicant has provided of the corner lots. And the amount of side, uh, the amount of yard, front yard that's been, uh, provided. I don't think six foot is adequate in this case. Uh, it should be wider. Um, and, uh, you know, we have reviewed projects that are, uh, where the building width. Is narrower than, um, as narrow as sixteen feet. So I'm not sure why the applicant. I, I understand why the applicant is trying to retain the width of twenty-four feet. Uh, but, uh, I think there are other ways of, uh, providing a three, uh, three, uh, unit. Two-family home on, on this, uh, site, meeting other DOT requirements. And I think the sightline study will be critical to help everybody understand that. So, um, otherwise, uh, other, I did not have any comments. Uh, that, that's really the missing link.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Ali Brown?
Um, I am fine with DOT's request for the five-foot wide sidewalk. I have really no comment about that. Um, as to the variance, it was I who questioned their. Um, size of their home, the width of the home, and requested studies to figure out whether or not that was in character. And from my un, understanding of the studies. They gave us a front yard study, which took in one thousand-foot radius about, you know, um, different lots that. Actually have substandard front yards along their longest frontage line. And it showed that there were only four within one thousand feet. However, they ranged from three feet. From street to sidewalk to eleven feet from street to sidewalk. And the subject property would be six feet from. Um, the building edge to the street sidewalk. So I was like, okay, that's within the range. They did a corner lot side yard study within the thousand-foot radius. And there are fifty-five corner lots, and the interior side yard average was given to us as six feet. And the exterior side yard average is thirty-one feet. And so they showed us that while the subject lots interior side yard is much smaller at two feet. Their exterior side yard is actually twice as large as the average at sixty feet. So I was like, okay, that's fine. You know, you give and take. And then they gave us the subject block home footprint study. And it showed us that the homes on the block have footprints that range from five hundred and ninety-four square feet to fifteen hundred square feet. With the average home footprint of nine hundred and ninety-six square feet. And they also showed that the average width of the home was twenty-six feet and the average depth was forty feet. And I think that's what pushed them to redesign the footprint of the building. So that this way they would be in line with the averages, because their proposed home footprint is nine hundred and ninety-five point nine-three square feet. Which is basically the average home footprint on this block. And their average, their proposed width is twenty-five feet eight inches. Which the average width for this block is twenty-six feet. And their depth, their proposed depth is forty feet two inches, and the average depth is forty feet. So what they did is they redesigned it to be in line with the averages of the home footprints on this, on this study block. Which is the subject block that this is going to be on. So for me, I felt that, okay, this redesign was more in character with the neighborhood, even though it was larger. To permit, you know, it's wide to permit the three-car parking. The only question that they didn't answer for me was the ratio of one family versus two-family homes. Because it's still in my mind, the shape of the footprint is wider to accommodate the extra parking space. That you would need to be a two-family home. And also, it's wider and, you know, it's, it's got no choice but to be wide enough. And large enough to accommodate two different apartments versus whether or not it were a single-family home. In which case it could be a more modest project. So for me, the only question is, what's the ratio of one family to two-family homes in this area? And then if it is a situation where it's fifty-fifty, or there are plenty of two-family homes. I would be fine with letting this project go through as it is.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you so much. Um, yeah. And I just want to add to that one little point about the two families. I, I'm so, you know, I agree that it needs to be consistent with the neighborhood character. But in this moment of lo, affordable housing and being able to be a homeowner. Where you can pay your mortgage, the rent is essential to a person whose middle income. They need to have that rent. Otherwise, you, you could end up with foreclosures, right? So for, for me, I'm very sympathetic to families. Um, and it's so typical in New York anyway. Um, so, okay. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Shaita.
Thank you, Chair. I agree that sidewalk should be provided, and I have no additional comments. Thank you.
Okay. So it's the five-foot sidewalk?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Uh, and Commissioner Shabeta?
I'm fine with this project.
Okay. Thank you. New cases? No, I'm typing. All right. Thank you. Have to write the word fine. Okay. New cases, item number twenty-five, twenty-twenty thirty-six BZ, eighty-four oh-one Flatlands Avenue, Brooklyn. We are still in review section. Yes. Um, just a second. Okay. We have proof of service of initial application to officials and have notice of hearing to officials and neighbors. Community board recommends approval. We have one letter of, of objection that doesn't state the reasons. Um, this is an application for a special permit under section seventy-three dash two-eleven of the zoning resolution. Which effectively reinstates the right granted by an expired variance number eighty-seven dash oh-two BZ. To operate an existing use group sixteen automotive service station and convenience store. Since the zoning district changed in two thousand nine, and I see Carlos' hand up just a second, changed in two thousand nine to a C-two-three. The site is now eligible for the special permit, and I'm assuming Carlos raising his hand about this subject. Go ahead, Carl.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. And I just want to make a slight correction. The application, uh, the seventy-three to eleven is just to permit. An automotive service station. Um, it's just referencing that this was previously a gas station pursuant to a pre-sixty-one variance. But this is a new application.
He, yeah, I just said it effectively reinstates. So actually, this was both a pre-sixty-one and a post-sixty-one variance. So it's pretty confusing. So pre-sixty-one, it was a whole bunch of things. And then in two thousand two. They, um, got a variance to operate, uh, use group sixteen automotive service and add a convenience store. So it's kind of a hybrid of lots of history. And I think over the course of the history, if I've got this right, yeah, because it's a very large site. Um, they enlarged the site in nineteen sixty-nine. So there was another variance, four eighty-three dash sixty-nine B.C. to enlarge the site in nineteen sixty-nine. So.
And we've seen quite a few of those over the years in the early seventies, late sixties.
Yeah.
These lots were expanding and obviously contrary to eleven-four-one at that time.
Right. So it's, I guess it's not technically anymore a pre-sixty-one variance I'm subject to. But in any event, um, it is now eligible for this special permit. And the claim is that the use has been continuous since the expiration of the last of the variance. Um, so, um, I think when we rely on some of the statements about the operations. We need to show, have Google imagery that shows it's been continuous, even though that's not a requirement for a new special permit. That they are asking us to rely on previous conditions. Um, and so, uh, yeah. So the applicant, um, so we were, with the special permit, we have to make certain findings. Um, and one of them, which came, uh, sort of alerted me. And then I see that, um, at our project manager's request. Um, happily, the applicant provided a copy of the master plan, the New York City Master Plan of arterial highways and major streets. To establish that Flatland Avenue is in that indeed a major street. Otherwise, it would have been too large, the site would have been too large to qualify for this special permit. So, you know, finding A and B, check, check. It's larger than the minimum and, um, is on a major street. Um, so, and, um. In looking at the adjacent residential uses located behind the site. I note that they are mostly shielded automatically by the rear of the subject site's buildings that sit. On or very close to the lot line. In these types of uses. I, I have to say that's, that's really probably the best solution for buffering, um, the residents from the automotive use. Because then you have a wall and the depth of the building, which is also a great sound attenuator. Um, and, uh, otherwise it'd be like short of a twenty-foot deep forest, which we have seen in some really old, old approvals. Um, the, the approved plans in this case also included a buffer of six-foot-high evergreens between the rear of the building. And the lot line, which I can't tell if they were ever built, installed, or if they exist. Um, I don't have any information on that. Um, the last resolution states that there was to have been a six-foot-high chain-link fence with privacy slats and evergreens. To buffer the adjoining three-story apartment building at the rear. And the six-foot high, and a six-foot-high opaque wood fence along the side lot line. Um, I don't see that as what's, uh, situation today. Um, please provide photos. Um, the use to the rear on East eighty-four Street is apparently illegal, non-conforming commercial use. With certificate of occupancy. So, um, so buffering of the commercial use is. Um, let's just say less necessary. The use is the same kind of, um, I think it's an electrical supply building. Um, the planting area on the subject site, uh, that was shown on the approved plans to protect the adjacent site. Um, is not being maintained according to street view imagery, um, and even the photographs provided by the applicant. So you need to provide planting there, and it should be dense planting, not just a little, a petunia here and there. The little building next door, um, on, they, that's fronting on Flatlands. Has, um, at the ground floor, um, an animal hospital. It's sort of a little extension to the building, and I have to assume, um, based on typical veterinarian offices. Um, that it goes all the way through on the first floor. But the upper floors, according to the certificate of occupancy, are residential. Um, this is in a C-two-three overlay district, but nonetheless, there is, there are residential occupants. Um, unless it's been all converted to the animal hospital. I don't know. Um, there's no planting or wooden fence to screen them. Um, it, there's actually a chain link in privacy slats, which was not the condition. Um, the grant condition was to be wood, but it's not much of a, of a buffer. Um, um, the actual use adjacent to the residences. To this residence is the convenience store. Um, which had this been excess, not been accessory to a gas station, um, like it is. Would have been allowed as a right in a C-two-three. So then you look at, okay, if they had simply subdivided the zoning lot and made that. And in a standalone, the PSA wouldn't have purview over this. However, I'm always just aware of what our case does. There are the applications that come before us, what those uses do to the adjoining residents. Um, and, but I have to say, I'm not sure if that's the reason the prior approval makes no special effort to buffer this property. Um, that adjacent residential property. The approved plans don't show a trash enclosure. But it looks like there is one adjacent to the residential use on Flatlands and some sort of container behind that. Uh, that's also what's shown on the proposed plans. Um, there's also a vacuum located adjacent to the Animal Medical Center, but very close to the residential windows. You, there's a sightline between the vacuum and the residential windows, so I'm assuming they can hear. Um, so maybe that's not a good location for the vacuum. Um, given the size of the convenience store, which although it complies with the maximum selling area of the TPPN. Is very large and may be responsible for a lot of perishable trash. I'm wondering whether in this situation, this might be a good location for. What we've seen before as an exterior refrigerated trash container. Um, we saw this in a couple of the big schools where they had on the exterior of their building. Basically, it's a refrigerated compacting trash container. And the, when the trucks come, I guess it just opens and pulls out something, empties that and puts it back. So, um, and because you don't remove that whole thing from the site and you don't lift that thing up. I don't, maybe you lift the contents up, but you don't lift up that entire big box. And I'm wondering whether maybe this is a situation where that would be a better solution, because it actually seals closed. So you don't have vermin and you don't have odors from something like that. And there's room. And it's a sort of a compromise solution being next to a resident. Where right now, you see the photographs show piles of garbage in that enclosed area. Um, piles of, uh, garbage in garbage bags. The proposed plans show no proposal to shield either the rear or side property lines that are adjacent to the trash enclosure. From adjacent residents. And it also removes the row of evergreens from behind the convenience store. That had been shown on the approved plans. I'd like the applicant to explain why that's being proposed. Um, please provide photos of all perimeter conditions along the property lines that are shared with other uses. Both the residential and the commercial uses. Show all the elevations of the subject buildings. It's only one side being shown and no rear. Um, the lumens spread diagram shows zero lumens at the residential property line on Flatlands. Um, using the proper lights on and lights off meth, method. Except that there are a couple of readings that jump from two lumens to zero lumens in a five-foot different distance. Which doesn't seem accurate to me, because, um, at other five-foot distances. The step down is at most one lumen per step. But most of the time, it's much less than one lumen per step. Um, it's also actually hard to believe that it's zero at the residential property line. Um, given how well-lit the side of that residential building on Flatlands is in the photo provided. Um, it's really well lit. It's like you can read all the, all the, the slat, the, uh, separation between all the boards on the side of the building. Um, and, um, and as we know, canopy lights are very bright. And so this is really quite close to the canopy. So I'm having a little trouble believing that it's stepping down as claimed. Um, I don't have any issue with the maneuverability or the other conditions of the special permit. There's a lot of conditions, which, um, I hope everyone has looked at the conditions to make sure that, um, they're considering them. I don't know if DOT needs to look at this, uh, even though, because it's a new special permit. Um, we should ask DOT, uh, if they have concerns, um, about this site. Uh, it doesn't, you know, I don't know whether there's any, been any issues, but only DOT would know that. Um, okay. Those are my comments. Vice Chair?
Thank you.
Hmm. So as you mentioned, it meets the two of, uh, it meets the threshold of that, uh, the C two dash three district, uh, longer dimension is more than three hundred seventy five feet and the minimum lot size requirement. The subject site has more than the seventy five hundred square foot of lot area. Um, and, um, in with regards to the condition, um, the, the enclosed building for areas used for lubrication minor repair. The existing repair facility is located in an enclosed building uh, of about nineteen, uh, twenty six square foot. So it meets one of those conditions. Um, and the auto repair service where they have like enough auto repair service where it is within the facility, within the building. That means no other services happening outside on, uh, outdoors. Uh, what, the second condition being the reservoir spaces. Um, the applicant is providing seven, uh, spaces, including one ADA, um, parking spaces. Uh, though more vehicles are parked on the site, um, based on the photos provided and the Google Street View. And some of these parked vehicles, uh, possibly are in the path of the vehicle circulation to and from the site. And, uh, and I think in one of the photos, it was encroaching, um, this onto the sidewalk. So I would say the applicant should evaluate the parking space need and identify additional spaces on the sites. Uh, most of the, it seems from the photos, most of the additional, uh, parking spaces are locate, are being located at the corner, uh, fronting East thirty, eighty fourth Street and Flatlands. Um, so, um, if the applicant is considering to provide any additional parking spaces, I think providing, uh, providing it along East eighty fourth Street frontage, uh, would be reasonable because it is furthest away from any residential use. And, uh, and to contain that, um, parking space, I think maybe they should provide, um, a, a low knee wall kind of thing, uh, to make sure that the vehicle does not encroach into the, um, sidewalk. Um, furthermore, I think the curb cut on East eighty fourth Street, um, may be wider than what is shown in the plan. And if that curb, uh, curb width is reduced, then, um, they might be able to provide three parking spaces along eighty fourth Street. Uh, now the zoning chart needs to be revised regarding the number of parking spaces. It states it as six when, uh, and it's not consistent with the plan. Um, with regards to, uh, condition number three, uh, three curb cuts on Flatlands are provided and, um, and each curb cut is thirty foot wide. I think the applicant forgot to put the maneuverability plan, uh, for, um, fuel tank and trucks. So that should be provided. Uh, with regards to condition number four, um, the applicant should provide photos of the rear lot line condition, as you've indicated, and indicate in the plan, um, the landscaping area. Again, I'm not even sure if a landscaping in that rear is even viable, given that the building is sitting right up to the property line. So I'll be curious to see what the existing condition is and if li- landscaping is even thriving there, um, before even I ask for it, actually. Um, so that's what I would like to know. Hmm. With regards to condition five, uh, regarding the signage, um, previously approved, approved plan permitted two hundred and fifteen square foot of total signage, and, and these were to be all illuminated. Um, the applicant is, um, proposing, um, a total of three hundred and two hundred and thirty four square foot of signage. Um, so it is an in- increase from the prior approval. Um, uh, the applicant, uh, should try to reduce it and bring it down to two fifteen. Uh, uh, unless a.
Just a second, this is a new special permit, so they can ask for new stuff and it's supposed to just comply with the zoning. Does it? That's the thing, we, we can't give them a variance for signage. But, um, but there actually were some even opportunities with signage, I think it says.
Fair point, fair point. I think they, uh, they, um, they are meeting the total surface area and then, uh, and, um, and, um, illumination, uh, requirements. So I think, um, yeah, but, okay, thank you for pointing that out, thank you.
And, and I also want to point out, I believe this is a C two, three district, is that correct?
C two, three.
And so it says in C two districts, the provisions of section having to non-illuminated signs, thirty to six forty two and six forty three shall be modified to permit non-illuminated or illuminated non-flashing signs with a total surface area not exceeding a hundred fifty square feet on the zoning lot. So it's actually a different set of rules compared to normal.
Right, right. So it's hundred, a hundred and fifty on the zoning lot.
Yeah.
Whereas the app is hundred and fifty square feet as opposed to hundred and fifty square feet per frontage.
Of illuminate, non-illuminated or illuminated, yeah.
All combined. The total surface area should be hundred and fifty square feet on the entire zoning lot. So in that case, the applicant is providing two hundred and thirty four. Um, and prior grant was two hundred and fifteen, so, um, and each of, so that's something to think about.
Yeah, it's actually kind of a confusing. It is a confusing. It's being more, more liberal and then it take it the way, I, I don't get.
Yeah.
I don't, I actually don't.
I don't understand this part of the section. I, I honestly speaking, this is something I came upon of the signage regulation. Um, I would say a year ago and I, I've, I should really put in more due diligence as to finding out the history behind that reasoning. Um, because I agree with you, it's a little bit counterintuitive i- in terms of where it's laid out.
It seems like they threw in the word non-illuminated and they didn't mean to. Because it's like you're getting a special permit, we know it's going to be a gas station. They always have those gigantic signs that twirl around, they take up a lot of area. Why would you give them less?
Yeah.
Yeah, makes no sense.
Yeah.
And we should look at that. I don't know if the board has experience with the special permit in those signs or we should look at that because I'm not anxious to have them remove a hundred square feet of signs. Seems ridiculous.
Yeah.
So, um, yeah, okay, so let, let's, uh, not talk just the signs, we'll, we'll go into that.
So that was, uh, that was finding number five. Uh, with regards to lumen, I really did not have any comments and, um, I was fine with it and that was it.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ollie Brown, you can speak about the signs, I saw you just like upset.
Who, me?
Yeah.
Yeah, it just, it makes no sense that you could go up in density in terms of commercial zoning and then restrict your signage. It's just, to me, it's gotta be just an error in the words. Don't get me started on the zoning resolution. I don't want to hear my views on that, but to me, as far as I'm concerned, in a nutshell, if they can make it more complicated for people to understand, they go for it. So, that being said, my only comments really about this have to do with the possible relocation of the trash enclosure from the northeast section of the site near the residential and mixed streets building to the northwest corner of the site, behind the parking space. And then in the absence of the trash enclosure on the northeast side, they should beef up that landscaping area. I think part of the reason why, well, first of all, we can't see the landscaping is because it's behind the dumpsters. And also it's, it, if we can't see it, they probably can't access it very well. And if they can't access it very well, they're not maintaining it. So if we can get the trash out of that area, maybe we could put a nice set of our brevete or something that kind of crowds that area and provides some kind of green space. And, um, but that's basically my only, um, suggestion to them. And as for the signage, until we could clear up what's actually going on with that provision, perhaps we shouldn't speak to the signage and let, um, DOB be the arbiter of whether or not they need to reduce their signage. So somehow in the resolution, say that the board is silent on the issue of the signage or something.
Hmm, yeah. Okay. Yeah, um. Yeah, you know, I was looking at where you could put the dumpster on that other side. So a, a lot of this is trade offs, it means you're putting it on the street. Um, and then, eh, but at least, because before I thought that was a residential use next door on that other side. But then when I looked further and saw it was a legal commercial use, then yeah, you're right, putting it there. I also think there's something behind the building on, on that side, the side that's closer to the commercial use. Um, so that they're using for storage of something else, so the dumpster may, enclosure could be there instead. So, okay, yeah, that's a good idea. Um, Commissioner Sheta.
Thank you, Chair. The only remaining thing I, I just wanna like give a hint about it is the lumen spread. I, I can see some discrepancies, especially for the readings at six feet with lights on. When lights off, everything is beautiful, zero, like, like the moonlight even wasn't there. So zero for the lights off. And then when it comes to the lights on, if, if you look at the plan, I'm talking about page seven of eleven, this is six feet lights on. And, and if you look at the Ferris light pool on the street on Flatlands, have, right next to that line wall, that lumen, the candles are almost seventy sixty nine point one. And if you look at the orientation, the Google view for that light pool, it's going perpendicular to the bill. We have ways to, especially these engineers, they have ways to look at things and they can judge based on physics, whether the readings do make sense or not. So when I look at that light pool, if I have a light pool oriented like this, when I go right or left, more or less, the propagation should be symmetrical. Not exactly, but more or less. But if you look at that light pool, seventy at the pool, when you go right, it's thirty seven. When you go left, it's sixty five. Huge difference. If you go one further step to the right, it's sixteen, to the left, it's forty. That gives me an idea that these readings either have something not quite right or maybe there is another light that's interfering with that pool. Meaning that the lights off shouldn't be all zeros. Like, like my professor told me back in the day, twenty five years ago, he said, the best way to do research is to do experimental work. And I said, why? He said, because you do the experiment and whoever doesn't like it and, and like object to the results, you can tell him, be my guest, go do it and tell me. So I'm afraid to say that who don't like this diagram, so they can say, okay, be my guest, come and measure it. So I don't know, I, I urge them to like take a look at it. But if, if this is the readings that, the reading that they got, it is what it is. It's, it's next to the building anyway, so I, I, I'm not, I'm not making big deal out of this sixty nine, sixty five, forty thing because it's next to the building. But at least it's, it's giving me an impression on how people started to learn how to do these kind of diagrams. So I, I leave it there, but I'm, I'm, I'm fine with it.
Okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Shabetta.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I agree that, uh, in moving the trash enclosure to the other side, I think that makes sense. And put in our, uh, decision that we're not making, uh, any, uh, we're not taking any position to the, to current signage and have DOB deal with that.
Well, we'll look into the signage story also because it may be even a typographical error that we'll see in the city planning report or something like that, it's possible, but thank you. Um, Jella, go ahead, Jella Pranga has her hand up.
Hi, um, I just wanted to go back to an earlier comment you made. You wanted, um, DOT to look at this project.
No, 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 not to look, I just, so DOT's been reaching out to us and saying, we want to look at your cases, right? So this is more like, here you've got this existing gas station. They're coming for essentially the continuation of its use, right?
Yes, that's right.
Special permit. Um, we just asked them, do you guys want to look at this? We're not asking them to look at it, it's simply, is this some, you know, for instance, we don't know, maybe there's a lot of crash data on this corner and they're like thrilled at the chance to change something about the curb cuts or whatever, we don't know, we don't have any reason to know that, right? So it's just simply ask them, do you want to take a look at the site?
Okay, great, thanks, because there is, like you noted, um, continuous use, um, for a long period of time, um, and their EAS shows since two thousand thirteen to Google Street View photos, no major alterations and no in-ground disturbance proposed. Um, but, uh, so there's no transportation assessment, but we could just flag it for DOT and ask them, do you want to, um, look at this? Okay, thanks.
It's really just a courtesy because we had an experience on another case where after a long time, they said they want to see the, the materials, right? So I'd say it's safer if we reach out to them now than we find out like right before a decision that DOT wants to look at it.
Okay, thank you.
Right?
Okay.
All right. Move on?
Yeah.
Item number twenty six, twenty twenty one forty four BZ thirty two oh four Bedford Avenue, Brooklyn. Hey, we have proof of service of initial application to officials and have notice of hearing to officials and neighbors. Community Board recommends approval. Um, so for the existing building drawings, um, I'd like the architect to provide string dimensions so I can compare, um, the existing building walls to the retained building wall drawings, um, between them. So there's the retention drawings that actually dimension the size of the walls to be retained, but I can't compare them to the existing building drawings because those are not dimensioned. Um, the front wall of twenty two foot two inches at the first floor um, is not being retained as is, as is indicated on the retention drawing. The retention length is actually more like fourteen feet. Um, on the retained wall drawing on the south side, um, you show both, the app, the architect shows both fourteen feet and eighteen feet to be retained as existing, um, which is it and why can't it be the eighteen feet? Um, there might be a fireplace, a chimney there and that may be the reason, I, I don't know, I couldn't really figure it out. Um, they should provide a retained drawing also for the attic level that has existing bedrooms, hence its floor area and we're retaining fifty percent of the floor area. On the proposed, um, attic floor plan, the architect labels the front wall to be retained, but the graphic, um, on the, on the proposed drawing shows that it's a new wall. So one of the other, um, they should correct that. The attic floor plan does not represent the entire attic framing and must. Um, the horizontal section where you cut through horizontally on the entire floor should be taken at four feet off the floor and indicate the clearances to the underside of the roof joists at each of that, those locations. Um, for, for example, in the area over the master bedroom, which has like a raised floor, indicate the floor to ceiling height and the, and the, um, elevation of that floor in the attic relative to, um, grade. So you know, the, the above grade elevation. Um, for the attic level, provide a floor area calculation diagram. Um, the, the attic information is critical because the ask is for point nine nine FAR based on, um, relying on a, a low floor area count in the attic for the, what they call the third floor on the drawings. Um, clarify on the proposed plans, the graphic of walls to be retained versus new walls. The, um, both read very similarly in PDF reduced form. And, um, especially because what we conveyed to the Department of Buildings um, may either be an eleven, essentially is an eleven by seventeen PDF. So when all the line weights blend together, you're not going to be able to see what's existing and what's new. Um, uh, the proposal. Uh, the proposal is a first floor to um pull to twenty foot rear yard and a second floor to twenty five foot rear yard. And then the third floor, it's hard to tell, but there's um because we don't have the full floor. Cut through, so it's really not clear where the slope begins on the third floor. Um, I'd like to understand better what the argument is in support of the second floor twenty five foot rear yard. When immediately adjacent properties are complying or nearly complying at that level. Um, I do note that there's a lot of illegal. Um, full rear yard construction at the first floor. Um, so um kind of on the side of this, I should be saying. The owner, at least here, is trying to do this, do their work legally. Um, so should be applauded for not just going ahead and building whatever. Um, but uh. The restriction on rear yard should be honored as opposed to what one of the neighbors did. That's apparently a B S A case. Where they just built full to the rear. Um, on the social block. Only one house appears to have a one point zero F A R, so this ask is a bit high for the typical. Um, building heights, however, seem to indicate that this one as proposed is in keeping with the character, even though it's like an almost thirty five feet high. Um, there's a label that says stucco on the facades. You know me, I'm always asking, stucco, what do you mean by stucco? Right? So it cannot be an exterior insulation finish system. If it's stucco, it needs to be lathered um with plaster. And stucco.
Epist.
No epist. Um, and uh, so yeah, so show that, please. Otherwise, use a different material. Um, those are my comments. Uh, Vice Chair.
Thank you. Um. So based on the review of the project, I felt that the proposed expansion is consistent with what the board has recently granted. The enlargement of the second floor is set back um from the rear yard. And the new third floor from both rear and the front lot line is uh set back. Uh, in addition, the existing building height has been reduced from the it's uh from its uh current condition. My only suggestion would be uh will be to reduce the angle of the second floor pitch. Uh, make it pitch uh more um in the rear. And let let it meet um. You know, and and so that it, you don't have this kind of. To this space in between the master bedroom and that attic space, kind of a void space. Which supposed to be is not functional. So I would suggest just take the bedroom uh wall, um, the. Roof line and extend it all the way to meet the rear wall of the attic. That way the attic uh. The uh. The placement of the attic and the height in the rear would would be further reduced visually. So I would be okay with it. Otherwise, it's fine.
So just to clarify, you're not talking about the lean beginning at the bottom of the second floor. You're talking about after you get. You get to that part where the ceiling is super high in the in that bedroom and you lean that to the height of the ceiling. Is that what you're talking about?
Oh, so there are, there are two angle. So there's the building attic. And then there's the bedroom. Uh, so there's the building slope and then there's the bedroom slope if I want to. So I'm just saying, take one of them. Make the angle uh uh more um less. I mean, instead of more, make it less. Right now, it's probably forty five degree, make it less so that it pitches gently. And moves away from the rear yard and then meets the rear wall of the attic. So this way, the appearance of the bulk in the rear would be less.
Right, understood, but where you take, beginning the pitch. Is at the point of the ceiling of the bedroom where it starts to angle, right? Not at the floor of the bedroom.
No, 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 I'm not asking, but yeah, it's where the perimeter wall height is from there, they can pitch up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, good. Thank you. Um, Commissioner Ali Brown.
So I have a question about the rear yard study. Thirty three homes on the block have the rear yard. And fifteen have rear yards of twenty five feet or less, but they don't fill in the blank for how many stories? And so the home diagonally in the rear appears to have a twenty point eight three foot rear yard, but they don't say how many stories, but it looks like it extends. For all floors. And I did notice that all adjacent homes actually have garages in their backyards as well. So if they could just answer that question, I would be fine with the rear yard. Starting at um twenty feet and going to twenty five feet on the second floor and above. Shouldn't the streetscape montage have a proposed home in it and not the existing home in it? Okay, that's the other question. And I agree with you that it isn't clear how many of the walls and how much of the walls are being retained, particularly on the first floor plan. Um, it's a little clearer on the second and the and the third floor, but the first floor is really unclear. And those are my questions.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Commissioner Sheta.
Thank you, Chair. I agree that we need to provide some more data on the retention on the first floor. Um, I I also agree on the comment regarding the um. Rear yard, uh, it could be twenty at the first, twenty five at the second. Uh, other than that, I have nothing further. Thank you.
Okay, and Commissioner Shabetta.
Thank you, Chair. I I would just like to parrot Commissioner Ali Brown's request for a montage with the proposed in it. It helps me see uh what, uh, it helps me um. See in real time uh what they're proposing and how it would look in the streetscape.
Thank you. All right. Move on? Uh, yeah. Item number twenty seven, twenty twenty one forty five B C seventeen fourteen East Twenty Seventh Street, Brooklyn. Okay, one second. Sorry, one second. Um, sorry, sorry, coming, okay. We have proof of service of initial application to officials and notice of hearing to officials and neighbors. Community Board recommends. Approval with two opposed, but but don't say why. This is a very minor two-story addition at the rear. With retention of almost the entirety of the existing building except for the one little rear wall. Um, the rear yard reduction is two stories for twenty foot rear yard. But adjoining sites have complying rear yards. Um, so I would like them to explain how it's justified to have. Um, the second floor only twenty feet. Um, the requested um point seven eight F A R is in line with the F A Rs across the street. Not so much on the same block, but directly across the street. Um, explained, I like them to, this is always confusing because we don't get the three D um of roof. Um. Diagram, the axonometric, right? Because it, when you look at it in elevation, it looks like the roof at the rear is penetrating the sky exposure plane. So they really do need to show the axonometric that's required by zoning. Um, and what is the reason also, which I found? Maybe I didn't understand it because again, it's in section. What's the reason for the abrupt vertical cut at the roof of the rear facade? It's it's quite strange. Um, and I I I'm thinking it's just how it's rendered in in um. In elevation as opposed to how you would actually see it if we saw an axonometric. Um, and yeah, if you look at the rear facade, it's just like, it almost looks like it's attaching to another building. And it's like waiting to attach because when I saw that elevation, I'm like, is this a semi-detached building? But it's not. It's a standalone. So um, yes, that was the question. Those are my comments. Vice Chair.
Thank you. Oh, thank you. Um. So this project, since the ask is very minimal and it is only proposing to expand um just for the rear portion. I was okay with um the expansion of twenty foot for both the ground floor of and the, sorry, the retention of rear yard. Um, to a depth of twenty feet both on uh first and the second floor and um. Though I would recommend eliminating the proposed balcony from the bedroom on the second floor, which is extending quite a bit out into the. Um, rear yard.
Oh, I don't think I even noticed that. Okay. You know how much it's extending, like six feet?
Uh, I have to go back to the plan.
Okay.
Six feet, yes. Six by seven.
So one of the things I noticed from aerial views, not on this case, because this is a very open. What we call donut of rear yards, right? It's extremely open. There's there. There are one-story garages in many, most of the houses, but there is no kind of illegal. Um, things going on beside, in in addition to the garages, garages are permitted, right? But in that other case. There was a lot of, in in the aerial view, all of these odd kinds of projections, either coming from the houses and then meeting up with the garages. Or just going straight from the house to the rear lot line. And so that kind of balcony is is sort of an a. A way of rear yard creep. You get six feet and then you have a garage and then you build the garage a little bigger than what you're allowed to do. And then the next thing you know, the entire rear yard is filled. So I agree that the, it should be more like a Juliet balcony or something like that, not a big extension. So let's just say a Juliet. A Juliet balcony is. In concept is like an eighteen foot, eighteen inch projection where you can step out and look, it's even wide enough for a chair. Um, and that's it. And therefore you can't take advantage of. Um, it hiding what you're actually doing in the rear yard, so. Um, okay, uh, Commissioner Ali Brown.
So while the rear yard study shows that there are homes to the right and to the rear with thirteen and eighteen foot rear yards. They are only for one story, but because this is really a very modest expansion that's in the rear. I'm okay with them having the rear yard um. At twenty feet for both stories. And I have no other comments.
Okay, thanks. Um, thank you. Commissioner Sheta.
Thank you, Chair. I agree. This was a small ask coming here. I have nothing further to add. I'm okay with the rear yard that the first and the second at twenty feet.
Mm-hmm. And Commissioner Shabetta.
I found this ask to be modest. I I'm okay with it.
Thank you. Okay. This concludes the public review session. Okay, so let's take a ten-minute break. Perfect timing, twelve oh three, right? Can we come back at twelve thirteen? So we get a full ten minutes, okay? Thank you. Hey, everyone. Do you have a corn? We have everybody?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Okay, we're back on the record. It's the Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for February eighth, twenty twenty-two. First item up is SOT Calenders New Cases, item number twenty-five nineteen fifty-seven BZ, twenty seventy-one Victory Boulevard Staten Island. So please raise your hand, your Zoom hand, if this is your case. There we go. Mr. Rothkru, who who just raised, is this Mr. Rothkru? No. Who's vessel?
Hyrum, Hyrum Rothkru and um, and Anthony, isn't Anthony?
I don't know. We have Hyrum in.
Somebody else. I can't think of who this, sorry.
That's all right. All right.
Adam, Adam, something. What aroma?
There's no Adam. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Rothkru, unmute yourself, please. Can you hear us?
Hyrum, can you uh unmute? I don't think I have this. There we go.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Are you the, are you the only one appearing?
I'm the only one appearing, correct.
Okay, can you wait, can you accept panelists so we can see you or on video?
Can you put that up? Uh, there was a, there was a link to accept this panelist. It's, I don't have it.
Oh.
Here it is. Okay.
Got it.
We lost, what happened?
No, I'm here.
He's he's opening it out.
I don't know how to, I don't know how to get on the video, but okay. Oh, here we go. There we go. Hello, everyone.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. Raise your right hand, Hyrum. Hyrum, raise your right hand. Thank you.
We go.
You affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board to respond honestly to the board member questions.
I do.
Okay, please proceed.
Thank you. So uh, we attended the executive session. Uh, we have had some responses for the board. First of all, I'd like to say that the station, the the existing gas station has been there for sixty years. And not mentioned during the executive session was that we attended the community board and received unanimous approval of the extension of term, including to a number of compliments about our our service station. So I was happy to hear that.
Um. No, I did. I said recommends approval.
Oh, all right. I didn't, I didn't hear that.
Didn't say anonymous, but normally unanimous. Normally, I I say it if it's um, if there's an objection. So
Okay.
recommend approval means everyone agreed. If there's an objection, and I'll say with three objections or something like that.
Noted, thank you. Uh, so first, I want to get to the compliance chart. The compliance chart represents all of the conditions for the site now. It might be a little confusing because at the top of the compliance chart, it lists the original variance approval. So somebody might think that the conditions underneath that are just for the approval given in nineteen fifty-eight. That's not, that's not true. I know it's a little confusing, but the compliance chart meets all the conditions uh on the site today. And uh, that's also shown in the statement of facts and findings, which you mentioned this morning as well.
Right. So just to to clarify, the statement of facts was much clearer because it explains when the condition was required, right? But your compliance chart just has a pile of conditions and not tied to anything. That's why they should be the same format.
Understood. Additionally, uh, the photographs that we submit really show most of the items, uh, the conditions on the site about graffiti, you know, clean and free of debris, uh, be well-maintained. Um, so the the photos sort of show that we're complying with the conditions of of the board conditions.
So to just, you know, because a lot of the times when we give these in instructions, just to make it, it makes it easier on us if we know that you have a photograph that demonstrates it. Otherwise, we're reading a chart and then eventually we get to a pile of photographs. And then we look at the photographs and maybe they're answering the question, maybe they aren't. So the best is always a compliance chart that says, see photo four, see photo seven, like that.
Noted, noted.
And there's one, one applicant who does a very nice thing where they provide um, a compliance chart where it has the condition and then a photo below it showing how the the condition is complied with. That's the easiest. So we don't have to search around for the separate package of photograph. It all has to do with ease of review because as you can see, we review thirty cases for each hearing. And so we're trying to speed through and find what we need to find as quickly as possible.
I understood. And we 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 will, moving forward, we will do that.
Okay.
Uh, as far as the CFO, you know, uh, we picked up this job recently. Um, we don't know what happened ten years ago. And quite frankly, there there's always a a great changeover of personnel and staff at BP. So the people we're dealing with at BP now weren't the people that were in charge of this application ten years ago. And I guess the only way we'd be able to find out what happened is to go to the prior applicant on the site, which we really prefer not to not to do. But it would take some time and digging to find out why they didn't pursue a CFO for so many years. But we don't know that that's uh, the best use of our time. But we we would take into consideration your suggestion that we file for a new CO now, since it doesn't expire for, since the term doesn't expire for a couple of years. So uh, that's what we're going to do. We're going to apply for a new CO now.
I think, um, just to clarify a little bit about my comment, when when you get an answer like that, that says, I don't know, it's not really that helpful, right? Instead, the way to say it is we weren't the prior applicant and reaching out to our client, we were unable to uncover the reason. Something like that, right?
Okay, okay.
I don't know.
Uh, as far as, as far as the dumpster, yes, we we agree for to uh, put in enclosure for the dumpster. Uh, we'll also consider the planting bed along the along the side lot line by the residential building adjoining us. Uh, we'll take perimeter photos. Um, as far as the fence to the far right of the building, there are some slats missing, so we'll we'll fix, we'll fix that area of the fence. And as far as a lumen spread, I mean, nothing's changed at the site since the last approval, which included a lumen spread.
Um, light bulbs change, actually, right? And this is what always happens. People go in and they go to the hardware store and they buy whatever, right? And then they install it. It works, yay. So the, actually, the lumens change over the course of this time. Sometimes if the light bulbs haven't been changed in all those years, the lumens go down. But um, we can't count on the same conditions. We've actually seen that the whole thing changed as a result of and somebody may have changed a fixture in those, that time. So, right?
We will, uh, we will provide you with that in the moment, right? We do, we do point out also that the adjoining house is uh, um, sixty-five feet away from from the canopy. If that means anything.
The adjoining the house to the
The house on Bradley Avenue. That's the only residential, that's the only nearby residential.
Okay.
Building.
But so that you're you're talking about the house itself as opposed to the property line?
Could, I'm talking about the property line, I guess.
So you're saying the residential property line is sixty-five feet from the canopy?
From the canopy, correct.
Uh, but are there any other light sources? Um, closer to the property line besides canopy lights?
I think I see a street light on Bradley Avenue, uh, by our site.
So there's a pole light, you see?
There's a pole light that that I see on the photos.
Yeah.
Photo, uh, photo number five.
Right. So that that's the issue is is that the canopy, you're right, it's very far away from the property line, uh, unlike another case we have coming up. Um, but the pole lights are often the culprits, not just the canopies.
Okay.
Even though it's a pretty short pole light, it seems like a shield would do the job there.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
One one other thing, when we file cases or we start to prepare cases, we request from the board copies for fast resolutions. We didn't receive a resolution, you mentioned, in an eight case for a curb cut in the bed of a map street along Victory Boulevard.
Yeah.
We we don't, we don't have that information.
So I get this information from reading the resolutions. So though, um, you may have requested the resolutions for whatever, based on the um, I don't know, which, whatever is, um, sorry, calendar number you gave to um, our our archives. Um, and they provided that. Then I read the resolution and I learned that there was one oh two dash fifty-eight A and there was eight thirty-three dash eighty-four A. So when you, when you read the resolution, you should then go back and request those resolutions.
Okay, one one of the resolutions, uh, one of the eight cases uh, back in the nineties, the fire department, we used to, if you wanted to have self-serve gas, you had to file an eight case, which uh, has since been
Right. No longer in our jurisdiction.
It, no, and it's that that's been eliminated. So we tend not to discuss uh, those kinds of eight cases.
Yeah, it's really, I mean, I'm not saying that you have to go through findings or anything. It's to complete our record so that we know everything that was relevant to the site. Um, so there's no mysteries because sometimes um, a resolution will tell us something about the site that we didn't know. Um, that's useful for future use. I'm not saying that'll be the case here. But the submission should always be complete with all the resolutions. Um, and then then the board knows that, for instance, the fire department waiver is no longer a relevant question.
Okay, so I'll 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 get those resolutions and I'll amend the statement of facts and findings to include what the, what the action was and if there were any conditions.
Great, thank you.
And that's, uh, that's it.
Um, okay, so you'll submit to us an alteration type one showing that you filed for CO um, renewal, right?
Okay.
And um, since this is permitted, and then you'll give us the drawings that show the enclosure and planting and so on.
Good, could, could, correct.
Okay, good. Um, what else? Photos of the perimeter, you went through those. Okay, yeah, great. All right, let's go to the public and then I'll ask you how much time you need.
Okay, the case that we're currently discussing is five nineteen five seven BZ, twenty seventy-one Victory Boulevard Staten Island. The dial-in number is six four six five five eight eight six five six. You'll be asked to enter the webinar ID number, which is nine seven zero five six four six three seven seven one. Press pound. You. The next prompt will pro- ask for a participant ID, which you don't have to respond to, just press pound. Once you are allowed into the Zoom room, please press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute. If you are in the Zoom room already, please raise your Zoom hand.
I don't think anyone currently in the Zoom room is here for this application, but so while we wait to see if anyone calls in. Um, Mr. Rothkru, how much time do you need to do this?
Let's, you know, let's say sixty days.
Oh, okay, so two months. Okay. Right. All right, um, just giving it another couple of seconds to see if anyone calls in. All right. All right then. So thank you very much. We're going to move on to the next one.
Sure, thank you. See you in a couple of minutes.
Okay.
Our next item was item number twenty-one fifty-eight ninety-nine BZ, eighteen dash ten Utopia Parkway, Queens.
Allowing Miss Fullader in. If you're, this is your case, oh, Andy Stewart raised his hand also. If this is your case and you're in the waiting room, please raise your hand.
Uh, Andy from High Point should be on.
He's on. He's on, he's connecting. Please unmute yourself, Mr. Stewart.
Okay.
Great. Wait, hi. Is that the, is that it, Elise?
Yep.
Okay, raise your right hands. Do you affirm to? Mr. Stewart? I can't see your hand. Thank you. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
I do.
Thank you. Proceed, Miss Fullader.
Elise Fullader from Eric Palanick PC. I'm here with Andy from High Point. Um, first, I would like to say why we filed this as an amendment. Um, first, I would like to say why we filed this as an amendment. Um, we had already, um, started the work for ADA compliance and we were told that. We would have to file an extension of time and only after we got the extension of time could we do an L S D, but then the plan would be inconsistent, so. Because we had this ADA compliance. And in order to file for the canopy on the previously approved plans and the ADA compliance. We needed the timeline to work out, so we had to file for an amendment. Okay. So. That was our only option.
Okay.
So, uh, we are, we have completed all the work, um, so there should not be anything else outstanding besides getting a C O at this time.
Okay.
Right. We can add the signage that, um, is from the previously, uh, approved plans and you saw the photos of the. Don't park here signs. We'll add those to the plans, no problem. Uh, we took a look at the knee wall, it doesn't look to our, like, like it. To us, it doesn't look like it has a problem, but we will have, we will go out again and make sure that the knee wall is.
So there was one photo, it was one photo that showed the knee wall, but in particular, the fence seemed to be bowing. And you know, sometimes it can just be the lens of the camera that creates the apparent bow. Just make sure that the fence is, you know, true. Um, and that the, the knee walls in good shape, okay?
Okay, no problem.
And it's worse. Sorry, let me just, um, because I don't know if, um, the, I don't want to create the same problem we had on another case. Um, if you're going to submit site plan, you have to submit the whole set of drawings, okay? Not just one corrected plan.
Understood, and the last time that was only done because of, we were, thought we were correcting one small, but.
Yeah, I know, but then we have this weird disconnect on the.
Understood.
Right?
And in this case, we, uh, have a full set of plans already from this architect and not another architect, so that should be pretty easy. Um, and then we will, uh, provide photographs of the security cameras that you requested. And last, um. Andy, do you want to just speak about the ADA speed, uh, ADA space and why, uh, it's head in parking?
Yeah, so when we reviewed the site, we reviewed, um, existing grades, also talked about and reviewed, uh, onsite traffic conditions and. From a number of factors, including the onsite traffic, uh, patterns with the new canopy that came up. Um, and the grades onsite, the stalls as shown with a ninety degree were, uh, the best option we saw. Um, I know it's not ideal, I guess, but it does have a twenty-four foot backup to that adjacent, uh, pump island, which is, uh, sufficient. Uh, so we don't see any issue with the, with the stall as laid out as it's.
Okay, so sorry, it was the grades that said to you that you can have parallel parking or is there?
It was a combination of, I'm sorry for talking. Um, it was a combination of, of the grades onsite, the way the grades with the new canopy and the drive mat were going to be set up. Uh, as well as onsite traffic patterns and as required, obviously backup aisles with the loading stall for the ADA. So it was a number of factors that played into the, the why it was shown at this, uh, at the ninety-degree angle.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Anything else?
I don't think so.
Anything you want to add? Okay, any comments, questions from commissioners? Okay, so let's go to the public.
The case we are currently discussing is fifty-eight ninety-nine B Z eighteen dash ten Utopia Parkway, Queens. Should you wish to call in, it is six four six five five eight eight six five six. You'll be instructed to enter the webinar ID number, which is nine seven zero five six four six three seven seven one pound. You will then be instructed to enter the participant ID number, which is to disregard, just press pound. Once you're in the Zoom room, press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute. If you're already in the Zoom room, please raise your Zoom hand. Please raise your hand.
Okay, thank you. So it's just to make that tiny revision to a plan and make sure we get a complete set. So how much time? Andy?
Um, no, thirty days would be fine if you want to give us that, so we can go out to the site and, uh, confirm again that knee wall. Um, and just make sure everything is, is a hundred percent accurate.
Mm-hmm, okay. Great. All right, um, nobody called in, so thank you very much. Um, I'm noting thirty days to submit, okay?
Should we, uh, consider closing the?
Yeah, yeah, sorry, sorry, yeah, I meant to do that. I wrote closed. Um, so I already did it. So motion to close, thank you.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Attley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number twenty-two, one oh one oh six, I'm sorry, item number twenty-two seventy-two eleven B Z. One oh one oh six Astoria Boulevard, Queens.
Hey, Mr. Ross.
Ross.
In here, I don't see him. Hello? Um, if, if this is your case, please raise your Zoom hand. Seventy-two dash eleven B Z.
Iren.
I don't see him. You?
Iren's supposed to be for the next one.
Yeah, he said, see you in a minute.
Yeah.
Mr. Rothkirk. He might have taken a call and he thought, oh, here he is. Where is he? I see him as a, be there you are, okay.
Aye.
Thank you.
Are you by yourself, Mr. Rothkirk?
I am, yes.
Okay. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do, thank you.
Go ahead.
We attended executive session and, uh, um. I'm very. I'm very appreciative of the fact that.
Uh-oh. We're losing you. We don't hear how appreciative you are.
I, I am. So we, we attended executive session. Uh, thank you for, uh, uh, your comments with regard to our landscaping. Uh, that's, that's always nice to hear. Um, let's get to the, the first issue, which is graffiti. And for that, I have to apologize to the board that I made a mistake in my statement of facts and findings, uh, with regard to the hours of operation for the station. It's not a twenty-four-seven station. They're open from six A M. to ten P M. seven days a week. And that brings us back to graffiti, because after ten P M., there's nobody on our site. And there's nobody to stop somebody from coming on our site to, to put graffiti on, on that wall, which, as you noted, we don't control. We have reached out to the owner of the building. Uh, we will continue to do so and try to take more measures to, uh, show the board of, uh, of our efforts to. Uh, reach the building owner. And if possible, if they give us, uh, approval, we'll take care of removing the graffiti ourselves.
Right, okay, that's what we really want you to do. Get permission from the building owner. Um, or even the tenant, I'm not sure what the, the tenant may have a net, net lease for all you know, right? Get permission from the building owner or long-term tenant. To clean the graffiti off the brick, that's all. So that you don't have to ask them every single time there's graffiti, please do it, and then they don't do it, because they don't see it, you see it.
Yes, it's, 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 it's uncyclic and it diminishes, it diminishes the value of our property and our, our service station. Uh, we'll prepare a dimension, uh, we'll dimension the landscape area on the plan and we'll also prepare a landscape plan for the board. Uh, we'll take some new photos. And with regard to the sidewalk on Thirty-first Street, quite frankly, we're going to have to reach out to, uh. Uh, the Department of Transportation and figure out why they made a sidewalk that was. Partially asphalt and partially concrete. We, we really don't know, other than we do maintain that sidewalk, you know, cleaning up weeds and. What other debris might be there.
Okay, so it's a hundred eighty-first, it's a hundred-first street. I think you said thirty-first?
I think that thirty-first is behind us.
A hundred, it's, uh, thirty-first app, oh, wait. No, a hundred-first, I'm sorry, a hundred-first is okay, it's thirty-first, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, thirty-first.
Okay.
And, uh, that really addresses most of the board's comments from this morning.
Okay. Okay, uh. Right, um, let's see if there's anything else. Uh, yeah, and so you'll find out about, um, no, no, I'm sorry, I'm mixing it with another one, okay, um. Okay, and you're looking to the landscaping, right?
Correct.
The ground cover or low shrubs.
Yes.
Okay, great, uh, let's go to the public.
The case we're currently discussing is seventy-two eleven B Z one oh one oh six Astoria Boulevard, Queens. Wish to dial in, it is six four six five five eight eight six five six. The webinar ID number is nine seven zero five six four six three seven seven one pound. You will then be asked to enter participant on ID, which you don't have to do and just press pound. Once you're in the Zoom room, you can press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute to speak. If you are in the Zoom room already, please raise your hand.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question?
Of course.
Yeah, so one of the comments I had was the eastern curb cut on Astoria Boulevard needing some T L C. So, um. Will, um, will Mr. Rothkirk be able to respond to that? The subsequent?
We'll, 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 we'll take a look at it.
Yeah. Okay, and I think Commissioner Sheta agreed that he saw cracks in the ramp portion.
Okay, but also, also we have our, we have our land use community board here in, uh, this coming Thursday night.
Okay, great, thank you. So please make sure we get a copy of the decision, okay?
Well, it's only the land use though, right, Iren?
Yeah, it's only, only land use.
Well, sometimes it's only land use that ever even looks at these, sometimes it goes to the full board, whatever their final decision, determination is, we should get a copy of that, okay? Um, okay, so how much time do you need to submit?
You know, Chair, I'd like to, uh, keep this, uh, as a companion with the other application on Victory, so. I'll ask for the same sixty days and hopefully within that time we'll be able to, uh. Resolve the graffiti issue and maybe submit photos showing a nice, uh, nice clean wall.
That would be wonderful, thank you, okay, excellent.
I think the previous one you asked for thirty days, so I just.
Sixty, sixty days.
No, sixty, two months. Let me just make sure I wrote sixty, because.
I have two months on Victory Boulevard.
Correct.
Utopia, I have thirty.
No, it was, it was thirty on another case. And two months for Mr. Rothkirk's other case.
Oh, okay, got it.
Thank you. Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Zoning calendar, item number twenty-three, twenty nineteen two sixty-five B Z. And six oh three seventy-one A, thirty-five Giffords Lane, Staten Island.
Okay, um. And letting in Mr. Rosenberg and Pastor Comus and Faye Ann, I think, Baytown. Kevin Williams. Um, David Rosenberg, I tried before and it doesn't work. Here we go. May please, everyone, unmute yourselves.
Richard should be there as well.
Richard? Nope. Not yet. Oh, there he is, there, yeah, yeah, he's there.
And I don't think we're panelists.
Yeah, so please accept your request to become a panelist.
Mr. Comus, you're part of the team?
Yes.
Please unmute.
Unmute and become a panelist, please.
There's also Mr. Parker. Jeffrey Parker, you're part of the team?
Yes.
Is he part of the team? Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we didn't know, we didn't.
Is he accepting the panelists too?
Yes.
Okay. And he didn't know. Is that it?
Are you having problems, Mr. Parker, getting on as a panel?
No.
No, can you get offered, um, panelist? So we can see your video?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
There we go.
There.
Okay, okay, everybody's there, okay, raise your right hands. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions? Proceed, Mr. Lobel or Ms. Faye Ann.
Thank you, uh, Chair Commissioners, Richard Lobel of Sheldon Lobel P C, joined by the applicant team, uh, including Pastor Gary Comus. From Faith Community Church, we, uh, listened to the board's executive session, uh, as was commented on by the commissioners. Uh, and particularly, um, Commissioner Hartley Brown. Uh, the applicant here was willing to quote, risk the ire of the board by returning to, um, the, uh, version of the application, which allows for. Um, entry and exit onto Sampson Avenue. Um, this is considered to be important with regards to the programmatic needs of the church. Uh, we're thrilled that, uh, the Vice Chair, Commissioner Hartley Brown, Commissioner Shabeta and Sheta, um, all seem to, uh, indicate. Their understanding of the, uh, of not only the needs of the church in this regard, but also. Uh, the fact that in a very real way, this would do what, um, the applicant has asserted, which is to reduce actually, um, both vehicular and pedestrian traffic. On Sampson Avenue and surrounding streets. Um, so with that, uh, I know that there was a discussion with regards to an operational plan. With regards to the restrictive declaration and importantly, with regards to, uh, traffic considerations. Um, I would actually have, uh, Kevin Williams of Equity Environmental address the D O T discussion, uh, understanding that. Um, Kevin has indicated that this is a non-seeker item, um, and so would not have, uh, the impacts as may otherwise be expected. Uh, on the application, uh, can, is Kevin able to do that now?
Yes, I, we know it's not a seeker, um, it's that, uh, D O T has requested to look at. All of our applications where there's kind of a new parking situation, I'll let Jella add to that. Um, and so they asked, before we saw this change, they asked, take a look at the application. So it's not instigated by or initiated by that, they asked in advance of that. Um, and, uh. Right, and then I have some questions about the restrictive deck, but go on, Mr., oh, go on, Jella first, Jella Pranga, she has. Because she usually has information I don't have.
Oh, no, I just wanted to add on to what you said, um, the seeker team at D O T contacted B S A and asked to look at it.
Yeah.
So there's different divisions, so.
Right, but it, you know. So what we're kind of learning is that an agency that's interested in a project does have the right to ask for information, whether or not it's, um. It's hitting the, the seeker, um. Sort of threshold level, um, and, and D O T has told us that they want to see in general anything where there's a new parking demand or. Um, circulation demand, like with a drive-in or something like that, they want to see all of them. So, go ahead, Mr. Williams.
Um, yeah, so I, I understand that, I didn't know it was preferred, so Kevin Williams, Equity Environmental, um. Thank you for a moment, um, so, I mean, that clarifies some of the background on this and, and I'm, I'm glad the board is aware that it's a. Non-seeker item, you know, so one of the concerns, obviously, and I, you know, this is a new concern. Um, from D O T that they, they review such matters, which is understandable certainly, um. Is, you know, that there's a parking study that's been prepared for this project for over two years. Um, and that parking study clearly shows. And I'll, I'll get into the different days of the week, because there was some really good questioning about, you know, what about weekdays? And I'll, I'll get into the different days of the week, because there was some really good questioning about, you know, what about weekdays? And, you know, as, uh, Commissioner Shabeta noted, and, um, as I have witnessed on a number of occasions out there on Sundays as well as weekdays. Um, not only is the community facility on Sampson Avenue have no parking, and I could literally show five random Sundays from satellite photography that show that completely empty. And there are more than twenty-nine spaces back there, and I can also discuss the right-of-way, whether it's M T A or DOT. Um, but there's just tremendous parking supply throughout the area. The municipal lot as well is ninety percent vacant. Um, the M T A lot, which was also a discussion, which is just a minor number of spaces, those are all under DOT purview and signed, and there's no hour limitation on, uh, Sundays. So actually, it's free and open for parking and signed as such, and I can supply that information, um, to the Chair and the rest of the board.
Question, when you refer to a municipal lot, where is that lot?
Okay, it's, it's, you know, documented and aerial photographed, um, in the document, but it's located at three nine two eight Anboy Road. P N R Great Kills, and I, I could pull it up on the screen and, and share it with, if you'd like to see it, three nine two eight Anboy.
Okay, that's the municipal lot, okay.
Yeah. And, and so, and I, I guess, since I'm sort of in this discussion, um, you know, there's this point made about what about the weekday traffic and what about access to Sampson? And is that parking supply sufficient? Um, and as noted in the programmatic report that outlines the hours of operation and the events, uh, related to various activities, um, that the church plans for the facility. Um, almost all of the, uh, communal activities that would occur, whether it's Bible study for children, uh, whether it's, you know, group, um, uh, sessions that, that, um, the pastor and staff may hold. Those all start at seven or seven-thirty and run to nine o'clock at night, so they're off-peak. And in addition, we're talking about small groups, um, and I specifically discussed this with Pastor Comas, you know, almost a year ago, when we, we supplied the detailed, uh, programmatic, uh, statement about what was anticipated in his experience on his current operations. And, you know, he indicated at that time, and based on looking at the programming, uh, and the programmatic, you know, we looked at it and, you know, it does not appear that it will be close to outstripping the parking supply, however, uh, offered at the site. However, the other note that's in the environmental assessment, and maybe this gets, uh, placed in the restrictive deck is, you know, we put forth the shuttle, um, based on the concerns of, of the board, um, that, um, and, and I think your question, Chair, about whether it's necessary or not is a valid concern. And the fact is that Faith Community Church took this on basically to address the concerns about picking up people at these satellite locations. And, and the idea behind the M T A lot is to pick up transit riders, not only people that might be parking there, because people will take the rail. Um, but I think one of the notes that may help address that concern about what if there's overflow, it states in the E A, if, if, um, it is determined that the parking capacity would not meet for one reason or another, in exceptional circumstances, you know, the, the parking capacity that that shuttle, you know, could be utilized to, you know, to bring people from the municipal lot. Um, and so we, we have addressed that, you know, and I know it's, you know, as you noted, been many, many, many hearings, a lot of back and forth. And so, you know, some of these lines may get lost and, and can be addressed in a freestanding operating plan, uh, to make that more clear. Um, you know, so I'm not sure if there, there are other issues and clarifications, but just in terms of the, whether the Sampson Road, um, is, um, uh, if, where that parking area is with the M T A, you can pull it up on Zola, you can see the lot line, you can see it's clearly in DOT right-of-way. Having said that, one of the things that I remember when we searched this is, there's this very odd idiosyncratic thing with the community's facility back there that its parcel actually runs through a portion of the road and actually across two neighboring properties. Um, I'm not sure if that's tax lot is correct, but all we did was analyze the area that's in the public right-of-way, which amounts to twenty-nine cars, which is what was assumed in our parking demand, you know, for weekends. Um, you know, so if there, if there were any other parking oriented questions, I don't want to take up the board's time, um, but I think those were some of the major, um, you know, one of the major issues in terms of clarification.
I, so I do have a question about that, because the data, material sources that I have don't, uh, overlay the tax lot clearly on top of an aerial where I can see where the parking is. So to the extent that you have something that makes clear where the public right-of-way is as opposed to M T A property, as opposed to the community center's own property, that would be very helpful, because it's really, it's such an odd spot back there.
It really is.
Right, it's like, that can't really all be DOT domain, and some of it truly isn't, but I don't, I don't really know how to measure that against the size of the roadbed and where those maybe kind of informal parking spaces are. That's the other thing. To the extent that you have anything from DOT about formal permitted parking there, um, that's what I'm concerned about. I, we can't have the board, uh, essentially condoning some kind of an illegal parking location, right? So as long as it's legitimate DOT-approved parking locations, that's a different subject, right?
Well, Chair, there, so that's very, very good point, uh, uh, you know, again, um, so I can either do one of two things. I think prior to this is just submit, you know, where the tax lots are and where the right-of-way is, but I can certainly show it on my screen, uh, from Zola right now. Um, but one of the things, I, and I pulled up, so New York City has a resource sign, you know, of parking, um, signs and street signs, and it indicates, you know, where parking is designated. Now, there are many spots in New York City, surprisingly, where it's not designated as parking, but it's also not designated as no standing or no parking anytime. Um, and that, you know, um, so, you know, that's sort of a, and there, those areas are more common in Staten Island, um, specifically. Um, but this lot, if you look for the last, or this, sorry, street, and, and ninety-degree, uh, uh, parking that's present there, um, has literally been going on for fifteen years. Um, so, an absence of, of signage, uh, indicating that parking is not present in the area. You know, I don't, I don't know if DOT will weigh in on that circumstance, but there are literally, you know, hundreds of segments, you know, in Staten Island that do not have signed parking. So I don't know if we'll get to the bottom of that, um, but, you know, what I can clearly show to, to the board, um, is that it is within DOT right-of-way. Um, and the portion of the odd tax lot, uh, that does, uh, intersect Sampson, um, on the east side, um, and, and shows like where basically, um, they have parking, it almost looks like a parking lot with a road running through them. But, but there are the spaces that we counted available for use are ones that are currently parked during the daytime. You know, clearly, you can clearly see it, they're not signed as prohibited in any way, um, and those are in DOT right-of-way. So I can, we provide that to the, to the board after, um, the hearing, unless you would like me to, to, to show it.
No, no, you can, you can provide it to us. I just need to clarify where those cars are. So I, then the next part of my question is, I don't remember the exact number, but your demand study showed something like a hundred nine spaces demand, which is where the subject of the shuttle bus came up in the first place. So we have twenty-nine onsite and twenty-nine presumably on a Sunday, maybe more, I don't know, um, on the Sampson area. Where, what's the idea for the others? Is it that they look in the neighborhood, or you're still going to use the shuttle bus? Like, what, what's the idea?
Yeah, I, I mean, exactly. That's the plan. So we, you know, there are all over forty spaces available, um, in, in the, uh, in the municipal parking lot. Uh, there's approximately twenty-nine available behind the site, um, and so the total demand was a hundred and eight, that's max utilization. Uh, and, you know, so you, you know, you subtract those and you, you basically wind up, um, and I'll just pull it up here just so we're not stipulating.
Yeah, but we still need, so that, that was my question actually from Mr. Lobel. So we still need the restrictive deck, but it needs to be specific about how the shuttle bus will actually work, because my frustration and confusion, et cetera, was we seem to have the shuttle bus driving around the corner and not driving to the municipal lot or the railway station, which was what was represented in the E A S, among other things, in Mr. Williams' various studies. So, yeah, I see your hand up, um, Vice Chair.
Thank you. Um, when I was reviewing the, re-reviewing the E A S this time around, I think the E A S says, not I think, the E A S does say, hundred and eight parking spaces would be required on Sunday, twenty-nine onsite, seventy-nine spaces, um, uh, public parking, publicly available spaces. That would be the two municipal, uh, lots that have been talked about, and the remaining twenty-nine would be on street. Um, and, uh, I'm actually confused. I thought the restrictive deck does refer very specifically with regards to, unless I misread it.
I don't think it had the addresses. That's the thing I was looking for.
I can read the statement. The statement is that the, um, proposed shuttle van will loop between the premises, municipal parking facilities, and the Great Kills Staten Island Railroad Station approximately every ten minutes. You know, we, basically, one of the things that Commissioner Sheta said during the hearings, which we took note of, was, was the opportunity to brought, to provide the applicant with some flexibility so that we can minimize any nuisance to the area. And so, um, you know, I think that, that to the extent we provide an operational plan to the board, the restrictive deck would tie the applicant to the shuttle bus. But to the extent that there's some change, for example, a modification based on traffic patterns of the, uh, of congregants, um, we would have some flexibility to make sure that we, we would be running the shuttle bus for sure, but if we needed to change more for one municipal lot than another or more trips to the railway station, we'd be able to do so.
Again, so, I don't, I don't think, so we've been asking for the locations of the municipal lots on the restrictive deck. It doesn't mean you can't, you know, it doesn't mean if nobody ever wants to park at that lot, you have to go to that lot, it's a waste of time, right? But at least we're identified, and if a new one opens, you can add to it, or other municipal parking facility in the relevant catchment area or something like that. There's certainly language that opens it up, but the whole idea is that you not expect those missing spots to be like driving around the whole neighborhood. That, that's the issue, right? So please do include whatever language you want, but also the addresses and the look at a train station that's the pickup site is from, assuming that people actually come by that train. Um, if that's a correct assumption, I'm not sure. Um, okay, and then, uh, yeah, so I just want to make, because what I started to get confused about was that the municipal lot is actually Sampson Street, and that is not technically a municipal lot, right? That's just.
No, it's, it's, it's on, yeah, I mean, that was a question like a year and a half ago, and it probably got buried, you know, in the back and forth on landscaping and parking and, and regulations, but, you know, I, I remember Pastor, um, um, and David lambasting me probably about a year and a half ago, like, you know, "don't indicate that that's a parking lot, it's on-street parking," and, and that's absolutely correct. It is on-street parking and it's not a municipal lot.
Right, right, okay, and the, um, yeah, okay, so we, we've got that. All right, continue, were there other things?
Um. Um, I mean, I, I guess the, the, um, you know, and Rich, maybe this goes back to you about the discussion, you know, for the need for the gates, for controls, and that sort of thing, and, and I, you know, I mean, I can walk through it, Rich, if, if you want to handle that or, or the pastor, yeah.
I mean, there's a general statement here, which was, um, to basically allow the applicant to, to operate in a way which is going to be as least impactful on the community as possible in terms of traffic. And so, and, and also comments the commissioners made with regards to, you know, policing and vigilanteism by, by local neighbors. We would, you know, it's, it's our preference to, to leave that, uh, and particularly the operation of the gate unrestricted for that purpose. As has been, uh, present from the materials, including the application, this, this facility will be used primarily on Sundays from not nine-thirty A M to twelve-thirty P M. And then midweek, I think the most that we projected would be in the near term forty parishioners, uh, attending a service on a Wednesday. Um, so it's, you know, we, we want to make sure that we start this relationship with the community on the right foot. Um, to the extent that, um, you know, the board understands that they, they want us to be good neighbors and want to ensure that, um, you know, we're happy to have that discussion and, and talk about, um, you know, coming in and, and confirming that to the board. But having said that, um, we would basically hope that the commissioners who discussed, um, you know, not restricting and not locking the gate to the extent possible, uh, you know, is, as, as being persuasive and, and allowing us that flexibility to, to, uh, you know, to cater the operating demands as they, uh, as they present themselves during operation of the facility.
I, I mean, I actually have to agree with this, because we know that especially houses of worship can become the brunt of, you know, that kind of neighborhood, um, for lack of a better word, vigilanteism, and using almost any excuse to make it miserable. So if we had a condition in our resolution that says you can't park here on a Tuesday, whether or not you parked on a Tuesday, one car parked on a Tuesday, complaints would start, that would be an excuse to make complaints. So I would prefer to not have either the board or the community, um, enforcing a condition like that. You know, it's one thing if you're not keeping the planting. I want you to keep the landscaping lush, right? But that's site-specific. That's not whether you're wandering around on the streets. And again, I, Carlo and I talked about this at length, there's nothing, and I think Commissioner Hartley Brown mentioned this, there's nothing to prevent a, a person, a person who lives, basically, and is in a car from driving around in the neighborhood, and then you can't say, "oh, but then I saw the person go into the church, therefore they're breaking the rules of the resolution." So I would, I agree, I would prefer to just stay away from that.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, so, and I was just looking at the landscaping plan, again, now that, um, and hoping, um, I know there's an, remind me, um, whoever, maybe it's Kevin who's the most recently at the site. What's the, what's the ultimate, or Mr. Parker, actually, what's the ultimate material of the parking lot? Or is the material, is the parking lot going to be resurfaced, is my question?
Yes, it'll be completely resurfaced.
So, one of the big issues that I had before about improving the, um, landscaping on a site, really, this is a theme of mine about environmental concerns, right? And it has to do with permeability, and I'm wondering whether, um, some aspect of this could then become more of a permeable surface using some kind of material that allows for, because you've got so much asphalt. If you could allow for more permeability on the site, so it's not all running to the drain, and then we lose, uh, the, the purpose of water, right? It goes all into the wastewater, and did you know that our wastewater from toilet flush and the wastewater from rain end up in the same sewage treatment plant? All mixed together in one, clean and dirty mixed together, so it'd be much better if it instead watered the ground. So it's an encouragement to please look at, to look at permeable solutions here, okay?
Okay.
Um. Okay, anything else that I left off? So we, we, it's not a seeker question? So what I need to, so we can, presuming that DOT doesn't ask for any changes, because, um, it's seeker, we're not seeker, we're allowed to close, I think, right? We don't have, Jella, do we have open seeker?
Well, no, this is the only open thing. Um, we were not planning on signing it for secret DOT review, but they asked for it.
So it's a seeker team as opposed to open seeker. It, you know, that's more like which team reviews it, doesn't mean that it's an open E A S. I think that's the question. So, and I know that the commissioners are anxious to not have yet another hearing on this, yet another whatever. So let's just assume for the second, not knowing that DOT is okay with your demand study and doesn't see any issues about traffic on the side street. We don't know, but, and if they do, then we would have to reopen, right? But we're not closing in the face of a, of a non-negative declaration having been issued, right? Or in other, we could issue the neg-deck, but we have open DOT review under sort of a, it's more like, I would have to say, it's more like a neighborhood character analysis, which we often do, right? We do that with all those parking garages that are not being reviewed under seeker, they're being reviewed under neighborhood character. And then, and that way, um, and then the only other thing we need to see from Mr. Lobel is the revised restrictive. And then, and that way, um, and then the only other thing we need to see from Mr. Lobell is the revised restrictive deck. Do I have that right? Um, Vice Chair, do you want to add something?
Yeah, I, I don't think, I, I think the neighborhood character chapter in a statement of fact should be beefed up a little bit more uh, with, uh, with the discussion of how the gates and accessways and all of that would be used. Um, and, um, the utilization of the parking spaces in that area, as Mr. Williams pointed out, it's on, you know, given the, the, the utilization, the activity level of the church on weekdays is, uh, off-peak. And the parking would be available during off-peak and will not be in conflict with the usage during the daytime. Those should be clearly written out because that is part of the neighborhood, uh, character. So those should be brought into the, from the EAS into the neighborhood character statement facts.
We'll do so. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Okay. Um, that, so that's the neighborhood character statement in our variance application, right? We're not talking about it in the EAS, right? Because that's.
No, no, that, that's what I said. Sorry.
Yeah, yeah, I want to say that's Kevin's domain. He knows how to respond to DOT's concerns, right? They're going to ask, they may ask for some change in the demand study. Who knows? I don't know how they do that. Okay. Because they may have other data sources that you didn't know that they would want to use or have access to or whatever. Okay. All right, I'd like to go to the public then. Okay, so the case we are currently discussing is twenty nineteen two sixty-five BZ and six oh three seventy-one A, thirty-five Giffords Lane, Staten Island. Should you wish to call in, it is six four six five five eight eight six five six. You're prompted to enter the webinar ID number, which is nine seven zero five six four six three seven seven one pound. You will then prompt, be prompted to, uh, prompted to put, enter the participant ID number. You don't have to do that. Just press bound. Once you are in the Zoom room, please raise stars, please press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute. If you are in the Zoom room already, please raise your hand. Okay, while we wait to see whether anyone joins the room, I, I do have a request. This is my typical, you've heard the milk and cookie request. So, as you know, we had, um, a community board who was very much opposed to allowing this opening onto Sampson. And, um, I think, uh, I don't know to what extent they were listening to our hearings where we, um, were responding to that by insisting on closing that access. So in the interest of not, um, inducing the ire of your immediate neighbors, since the word ire is kind of more using today, um, in the interest of not inducing the ire of your immediate neighbors, I would wish that, um, the pastor reach out to the community and invite them at some point early on in the story to what I call milk and cookies. That's the, how you make nice to your neighbors, like immediately. So it avoids them, um, becoming problems as, as the occupancy, as, as your parish grows. Because I know that you're not at your full capacity. So you don't want to have problems as you grow. You want to be able to head them off at the pass. And you also want to be able to provide contact information so that if anyone in the immediate neighborhood has a problem, they know they can call you and that you will react by taking care of whatever it is to take care of somehow. Okay?
Absolutely. Uh, I appreciate, uh, you sharing that, but, um, we were already planning to do that. Uh, we've done that over the last twenty-nine years as we have served the Staten Island community in four different locations. And we would certainly do that here, um, because our main concern is that we are good neighbors. You know, that's, uh, really what the church is all about. And so, uh, I appreciate you, you bringing that to the, um, to the discussion today. And of course, we would certainly do that.
Okay, and I never make milk and cookies a condition in the resolution because I actually don't know how to phrase it. So. Um, okay. Thank you. So I don't see anyone calling in. Um, and so with those instructions, yeah, I'd like to make a motion to close. Chair Promoter?
Hi.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Hi.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Hi.
Commissioner Asher?
Hi.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Hi.
But then I forgot to ask Ms. Ms. Lobell how much time, and, um, I see the vice chair's hand up. Yeah, go ahead.
Just want to, um, the, the thirty-five foot easement on the site plan, can you just make it a bit more eligible? Uh, sorry, not eligible, legible.
Legible, yeah, clean up that long way.
Thank you.
Yeah, but, and how much time to submit, but it, you don't have to tell us right now. You can also let us know when we reach out to you, but if you know, tell us.
Yeah, Chair, the, the minor, uh, change to the sewer easement, um, along with, um, restrictive deck and the, uh, and the statement of facts change, you know, can be accomplished in, in, you know, probably a week, maybe, you know, a week or two weeks.
But it's the DOT that we don't know. So well, maybe what we'll do is we'll schedule this in terms of Mr. Williams' reach outreach to DOT and, um, and the turnaround with that. We'll see what we can calculate. Okay?
Understood.
Yeah, Jella, if, um, you know, later in the week, um, after, after you, um, settle, uh, after your hearings, maybe, maybe we can try to reach out to, uh, Shaquille and Michelle and see if we can help expedite the review.
Yeah, I'll help out with that.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you for your consideration, Board. Thank you.
And thank you to Commissioner Shabeta for the site visit. We appreciate the concern over this application. Much appreciated.
Don't go into the details. We closed the hearing. Thank you very much for coming. Okay.
Bye-bye.
Bye. The next item is twen, item number twenty-four, twenty twenty-one thirty-six BZ, twenty twenty ninety-eight, two forty-four Gansvort Boulevard, Staten Island. Mr. Rosati. Okay, he's in. Are you by yourself, Ron? Good, your panelists, Ron. Hi. Are you in by yourself, Ron?
Yes.
Okay. Do you affirm to, raise your right hand, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth of your statement before this? In your testimony before this, or to respond honestly to the board member questions?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Ron Rosati for the applicant. Good afternoon, Commissioners, Madam Chair. Uh, heard your comments earlier today. I can respond to them. Um, we'll gladly provide the five-foot wide sidewalk that DOT is requesting. We'll also submit a builder's pavement plan addressing all the DOT comments. Um, the sight line study, um, gladly submit that. And just to confirm, that will be showing the views, um, coming down Gansvort approaching Westwood and also coming down Clermont approaching Westwood, um, showing that the home does not block any, um, sight lines for vehi, vehicles coming down those streets. Is that correct?
I think so. I haven't driven it. I don't, you've driven it, I'm assuming.
Yes, yes.
With the fact of the site, right? So you know, way, if there was an object in your way, it would block you. So.
Okay, understood.
Never street. I think it would be all streets, right?
Yes, okay, understood. We'll submit that into the record. Uh, we'll also submit the one and two-family, uh, study, uh, for the area to show how many one and how many two-family homes are in the area. Um, and, uh, Madam Chair, like you mentioned, we would like to maintain an affordable two-family home with that rentable unit. It does help to pay the mortgage. I did speak to the architect and the developer earlier today, and they did state it would be difficult to lay out a two-family home that is less than twenty-two to twenty-three feet wide. Um, so we would propose a five-foot sidewalk. We could increase the front yard from six feet to eight feet. That would narrow the house down by three feet, uh, between twenty-one feet, six inches and twenty-two feet, eight inches. Um, would that be acceptable to the board?
Very, very much so. And then you could increase the length.
Yes.
Right?
Yes, to make up, to make up for the lost floor, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, that'd be great. And then you still have room for three cars?
Uh, uh, yes, I believe so. Um, taking those three feet off, we, it would crunch the house down a little bit, but we'd still fit the three-car garage there, yes.
Okay, okay. Um, okay. Is everyone okay with that? Or numbers? Okay. All right then. Uh, Jella has a hand up. Oh, Jella, go ahead.
Hi, um, I just wanted to see if FDNY was satisfied. If the applicant's response, um, they provided a response FDNY.
Oh, sorry, a little confusing. What? They, who, the applicant respa, provided a response to fire department's request for, for rooftop access or something?
No, it wasn't rooftop access. It was, um, the access road, I believe. Um, let me go look at my notes. But it was in the submission materials. Um.
The building is.
It says, um, at the hearing, fire department testified regarding the potential need to install sprinklers, which they're doing, right?
Yes.
And then we wanted to know if narrowing of the street width is adequate for fire department or access route. And we wanted fire department to provide a response on that. And the applicant responded in the cover letter that five oh three point three point two is actually applicable because this is a public street, the home will be sprinkled to comply and a variance not needed. And then the other one was fire department's comments issued on November sixteenth. A letter for the record should be provided. I don't know.
That was from testimony, those comments, not, um, like verbal testimony.
I see. I'm reading jealous comments, so I'm giving, so that's why. So, um, Chief Daly, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, uh, yes, we had requested that an application be filed, uh, fire code, uh, variance. And to date, I just checked this morning, we have received no such application for our city planning unit to review and okay the, for the construction of the house.
But what's the variance for? He's going to sprinkler.
Uh, he, yes, but because the, it's a substandard width, sh, street of fire code, uh, variance is required. And in addition to that, internally, we have to notify our, the administrative company, first two units that, hey, you know, the house is going to be constructed. We may, no, the house is being constructed to substandard, um, width of the street. Uh, we are going to require no parking along both sides of the street so that our first two units, uh, will not have trouble getting to the house in the event of a fire. But, uh, we have received no such submission, uh, to date.
Mad, Madam Chair, I'd like to respond to that. I believe I responded to it at the last hearing and in the response to the last hearing. This, um, building fronts on public streets. It does not front on fire apparatus access roads. Um, so section five oh three point three point two applies, which is for public streets. And I cited this section in the response, and it clearly states that all you need to do is to sprinkle the building. I've had experience with this all over Staten Island on substandard, uh, width streets that are less than thirty-four feet in width. You do not need to go to the fire department for a variance. All you need to do is sprinkle the building. It happens all over Staten Island, possibly other boroughs also. But just because the street is less than thirty-four feet in width, it is a public street and all you need to do is sprinkler the building. Uh, it's in the fire code five oh three point three point two. And I submitted that, I submitted that into the record. It's in the, it's in the cover letter.
But, just a second here. You're building in the bed of a street.
Right, but the, the building still fronts on public streets. These aren't fire apparatus access roads, which, which are like private roads.
So you're saying Gansvort and Clermont are public streets. You're building in the bed of a, of a mapped public street, right?
Right, and the building fronts on public.
You're saying, you're reducing the street road width with your house in the way. So, you know, I, I, I don't really know this because this is fire department's call. And I would say like, why fight with the fire department if all you're doing is filling out a form to get a variance? But, um, but the fire department up until this house gets built could drive their truck right over this vacant lot. So essentially, the road width has not been reduced as long as, um, there's no house there.
I just don't.
I don't know what they're getting at exactly because I don't under, I don't know the rule well enough, but I don't really know what's, what's the big deal about filling out forms.
I don't know what variance would be asking for. Um, it just, I'm not clear because we, a, as per the fire code, we're meeting the fire. So I don't know what, yeah, five oh three point three point two.
It says buildings on public streets.
Right, these are public streets.
Yeah, but it says building, substandard width, buildings on public streets that have an unobstructed width of less than thirty-four feet shall be protected without, throughout by sprinklers. Buildings on substandard width public streets that were not required prior to the effective date of this section to be protected throughout by sprinkler shall comply with this requirement. Okay, so we're getting a sprinkler, um, not a plot of law. So I don't know where the one is about, um, uh, what's, what's the other one? Um, Chief Daly, what's the section that you were referring to about?
Five oh three point two point three, which is for fire apparatus access roads. This is not a fire apparatus access road. It's a public street.
Five oh two.
Public, a public street is a fire apparatus road.
But it's, it's differentiated in the fire codes. You can act, like I said, uh, Chief Daly, I, I had experience with this on Staten Island. You, you know, as a right homes, proceed on streets that are less than thirty-four feet in width all the time. They don't need fire.
Fire apparatus road. A road that serves to provide access for fire apparatus from a public street to the fronted space of one or more buildings not directly fronting on a public street. A fire apparatus access road includes any road that serves such purpose, whether denominated as a driveway, parking lot ma, lane, private road, or private street.
Right.
So you're saying.
We're a private, excuse me, we're a public street. I think it's the, I think public street is defined in this section also. If you scroll down, um, maybe up, I'm sorry. It's public street right there.
All streets, including map streets, record streets, marginal streets, and restricted youth streets established on the city map, et cetera. And, or that, yeah, established on the city map.
Right, so all three streets surrounding the site are public streets. And we're sprinkling them as per section five oh three point three point two.
So I'm gonna, so Mr. Rosati, I always defer the fire department because their fire trucks have to do their job. So if they need something that is maybe a little, sounding a little abnormal, I need to give them the something because I don't want to be responsible for the homeowner who purchases your house having the fire truck, like, let's just say, crash into it, or they can't fight a fire because of whatever the reason is, because the fire company wasn't alerted that there's a street narrowing in that spot, which they mark on a map, I'm assuming. Um, and that was subject to a variance. So, um, you, uh, Chief Daly does not have to decide on this now. But if the instruction ultimately is that you need to file a waiver, you need to file a waiver, okay? Because safety is what we're interested in here, not necessarily, um, parsing out exactly what it says in that section of the code. The firefighters really know their work, um, and I, we need to support them in that, okay? I'm just saying it like right here, okay?
All right. I, I'd request the letter from the fire department because I'm still unclear what I'm requesting a waiver of.
All right, so, so they'll clarify.
Yes.
They'll, they'll follow through and clarify. Um, and Vice Chair Shonda, you had a question?
Yeah, um, question for, um, Chief Daly. Um, does this, uh, approval, should it be required? Does, does it need to be provide, uh, approval be required prior to the issuance? Or is it something that can, uh, that would be part of the process of review? Uh, when it, when a work permit is submitted for the construction of the building or something like that?
Yes, in the building department is required to notify us, you know, when, um, building to be constructed on roadways that are less than thirty-four feet in width. Uh, then, you know, with the fire commissioner, he has the authority to, to either, to ask that the roadway be, uh, widened in this case. Here, we, we understand that the applicant is going to provide sprinklers, but I need, need the Bureau of Operations to, the, to, um, to accept the current condition, the twenty-four-foot roadway. Advocate can provide sprinklers, of course, without smoke detectors. If the Bureau of Operations accept this, uh, arrangement and will provide a, a letter of no objection. uh, to, to the application, and then we're done with it, then we can move on. But if the Bureau of Operations sees, oh, wait a minute, no, this uh, roadway needs to be widened, it's their call. So I'm, I, I, I don't fully understand what the Bureau of Operations want. To be on the safe side, they should file an application for a variance of the fire code that the, the road width is less than, um, required 34 feet and have the, uh, the Bureau of Operations accept the condition and that the noted, noted that the building will be sprinkled and have a, a smoke detector and move on.
So, you know, so part of the problem is the citation to the right section in the code. I think that's what Mr. Rosati is getting at. That, um, when you read the code, it talks about, um, a public, I mean, a, an access way, an apparatus access, and which excludes public streets. So, um, if there's a waiver, it could be formed in another way where you don't cite the code. Instead, you are explaining to, um, Bureau of Operations that this is the location, this is the width of the roadway proposed, um, I'm going to sprinkler, are we good? It could just be a letter like that without actually citing to a section in the code, just to inform them and then to get a sign off. Okay, you know, just do it like that.
Yes.
Would that work?
Yeah, that works.
So how about this, Mr. Rosati? Just write a letter. You don't need to cite to any section in the fire code. And attach your site plan that includes the roadway width, indicate clearly your building will be sprinkled, and you're just requesting their, you know, their consent that this is an acceptable, uh, condition in this location. That's all.
And is that sent to, uh, Mr. Chief Daly? Is that just an email to the user?
Given to us, and then we'll forward it to fire department, okay?
Okay, no, you, you have to prepare an application. Is it, uh, there are application, the fire code, uh, variance application. Uh, it's on our, uh, fire department website. Formally submit that to business services, and then it, it routed up to, um, to Bureau of Fire Operations.
Understood. I just need clarity, I just need clarity on which section of the fire code we are varying.
No, and so this is what I'm trying to say. So in the section that says which section, write, see attached letter. That's all.
Right, okay.
Okay. All right, good. Um. Um, all right, I think that's it then, right? Everyone, questions? Vice Chair, you had your hand up. You're good now? Okay, um, so let's go to the public.
The case we are currently discussing is 2021 36 B.C. And 2020 90 A, 244 Gansward Boulevard, Staten Island. Should you wish to call in, the dial-in number is 646-558-8656. You're prompted to enter the webinar ID number, which is 970-5646-3771 pound. You would then be prompted to enter the participant ID, which you can ignore and just press pound. Once you are in the Zoom room, you can press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute. If you are already in the room, please raise your hand.
Okay, so how much time to submit these materials?
Uh, one month should suffice.
Okay, I just need to see if there's anyone waiting. No, okay. All right then, so I'm marking it down as 30 days to submit, which should include a copy of the application you submitted to fire department?
Yes.
Okay, okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Um, so I think, um, we should take a 30-minute break, because we have a few more left. Okay. All right, I'm, that's, okay, yeah, so, back at two o'clock, it's really 25 minutes, back at two o'clock-ish. Two oh five, okay, okay.
Okay, everyone.
Okay, good afternoon. Back on the record. Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for February 8, 2022. New cases, item number 25, 2020-36BZ-8401, Flatlands Avenue, Brooklyn.
Okay.
Oh, you're there. Okay, good.
Yeah. Okay. Hi. Andy from High Point should be with us again. There he is.
Okay, that's it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, raise your right hands. Do you form to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond to the board member questions?
I do.
I do.
Okay. I think for this applicant, oh, Elise Hulodair from Eric Palanick PC on behalf of the applicant with Andy from High Point. I think that for this application, it would be really useful to share the site plan, if I may.
Mm-hmm.
So, okay, share. Okay. Everyone can see it?
Yep, yep.
So, I guess the first comment about continuous use, as Jella pointed out, is in the EAS. We can take it out and have it a separate document for clarification.
Sure.
And then I think the next conversations were a lot about trash enclosure, parking, lighting. So I guess we can go through those with the plans because some of them we wanted to discuss what your board was thinking.
At least you're echoing.
I'm echoing?
Oh, yeah, you are.
I'll try to move to a different location and maybe that will help.
So, do you have your YouTube on or something?
Right. Do you have maybe your phone on also? I don't have anything else on.
Now you all sound like you're echoing all the time.
No, this is not a, this is not a kind of echo from YouTube. It's, it's like at the same time she talks. If you can mute and unmute here, or mute and unmute yourself, probably it's gonna work.
Just to clear it. Is that better? I think so.
Yeah. I also went closer to the internet, so hopefully.
Okay. Yes.
Okay, so first I guess we can discuss the trash enclosure, which is, or actually first, we heard your comment about the plantings in the rear. I can see showing that on the previously approved plans. As you pointed out, it actually is good that the building's on the lot line. It was built to the lot line, so we couldn't plant behind it. It's built to the lot line.
Yeah, okay. That was not clear on the previous set of drawings. It looks like there's some distance from the lot line to the back of the building. So that, yeah, wasn't clear. But we also know that there's kind of a limited tree pit width. So if you only have a foot, there's not going to be a tree. So that was the other thing. Yeah, okay, good thing.
Nothing there. And then next we can talk about the trash enclosure. Andy, would you like to help discuss this one? I, I think you asked to put it over here with the number one parking spot, right?
Yeah, or actually that other area that's called existing, and I can't see what it says, something in cell, oh, it's a trap door, so that would block.
Yeah, so we can't put it there. You wouldn't have access to the door.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I misread that, okay.
But the problem with that, and I guess Andy can keep discussing it, is we would lose a parking space there.
So, so that little planter thing that is, was originally intended to sort of decorate against what I guess was thought of as a residential use, even though it's not. What if it was, so let me, let's see, if the fence that goes to the trap door to the cellar were moved back and you still maintain like a three-foot clear in somehow, and you install the trash enclosure thing like around there, would there be room to clear for just a work, it seems like that trap door is not a fire regress, it's just a convenience asset access to the cellar, right?
That's correct. It's a, it's a Bilco door that leads down to the cellar.
Right, so if, and I don't know what the dimension is from the, or maybe it says, actually, I just can't see it. The, the mention from the back of that wall to the property line, the, I don't want to say north, it's like the west north, northwest corner direction, so top and bottom of page, that distance. I don't know if there's enough room to fit both the trash enclosure and enough room for whatever happens to go down into the cellar, but maybe the trash enclosure could go kind of in that spot, and then with a, just a little bit of a planter on the street face on 84th Street to conceal it a little bit, something like that.
Yeah, we could take a look into possibly relocating it there. I mean, if we did, I think they'd try to want to keep it as a chain link. Just, it's not a residential, as you noted, the adjacent. I think chain link would be okay, especially if we're gonna put gates in that get to the access to the Bilco doors in the back. But that's something we can look at, see the spacing and try to make, like, of course, maintain the parking stall at the same time, because we don't want to lose parking, so.
Right, understood. Yeah, take a look at doing something like that. But when you say chain link, what I'm, you know, my reason for not liking chain link is because it gets wrecked so easily. So when you have a parking space there, the, the bumper of the car smashes into the chain link and bends it, and then it, it just looks terrible. So it's not, so the masonry enclosure thing is, is one way around it. It's not the only solution that exists for trash enclosures. But the whole idea is to not make it look, not make it something that easily kind of decays, you know?
Understood. Perhaps we could put a proposal wheel stop in that stall or something, or even a bollard, if, as long as the gate's clear, or something, maybe not a bollard. Something, something that would satisfy that. We'll take a look at it, so.
But I mean, the issue is also we're now moving trash essentially to the street line, which is on, it's not, so the immediate use is commercial, but residents walk down the sidewalk, right? So they shouldn't be looking at trash. That's why I'm saying some landscaping right up at that corner that conceals it. That's why I keep saying pull it back into that recessed area to the extent you can and still gain access to the Bilco doors. And I, I don't know what the dimensions are or anything, so I actually, this is just kind of ideas without knowing more.
Yeah, it looks like from the, that rear little part of the building there, I guess it's about six and a half feet approximately between the property line and that where it bends back to the building there, so.
Okay. The other part of the question is, so you lose a parking space, like what, how is that parking spot actually used? Yeah, how is that parking spot actually used? Because it's not the ADA access, is it? And it's not the cars waiting service because it's not enough, right?
Well, it is, it is indicated as for any cars waiting service. I mean, I know it's not enough, but I think that's, that's predominantly what they use it for.
Wait, wait, wait. So what's the thing that's, that thing is called the existing dumpster? Okay. Well, what about using where the existing dumpster is and putting parking there? Then you would replace that with that, switch that, those two out.
That's, that's a possibility. We can definitely look at that and see what, what we can do with it.
Okay. That might be the easiest solution, but then landscaping along 84th Street to conceal the enclosure.
Okay, everyone. Okay, good afternoon, back on the record. Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for February eighth, twenty twenty two. New cases, item number twenty five, twenty twenty thirty six B Z eighty four oh one Flatlands Avenue, Brooklyn.
Hello.
Oh, you're there. Okay, good.
Yeah, okay, hi. Andy from High Point should be with us again. There he is.
That's it?
Mm hmm.
Okay, raise your right hands. Do you form to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to the board member questions?
I do.
I do.
Okay. I think for this applicant, Elise Hulodair from Eric Palatnick P C on behalf of the applicant with Andy from High Point. I think that for this application, it would be really useful to share the site plan, if I may.
Sorry.
Okay, sure, okay. Everyone can see it.
Yep, yep.
So I guess the first comment about continuous use, as Jella pointed out, is in the E A S. We can take it out and have it a separate document for clarification.
Sure.
And then I think the next conversations were a lot about trash enclosure, parking, lighting. So I guess we can go through those with the plans because some of them we wanted to discuss what your board was thinking. I'm echoing?
Oh, yeah, you are.
I'll try to move to a different location and maybe that will help.
So do you have your YouTube on or something?
Right, do you have maybe your phone on also? I don't have anything else on.
Now you all sound like you're echoing all.
No, this is, this is not a, this is not a kind of echo from YouTube. It's, it's like at the same time she talks. If you can mute and unmute here or mute and unmute yourself, probably it's gonna work.
Just to clear it. Is that better? I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I also went closer to the internet, so hopefully.
Right, okay. Yes.
Um, okay, so first I guess we can discuss the trash enclosure, which is, or actually first, we heard your comment about the plantings in the rear. I can see showing that on the previously approved plans. As you pointed out, it actually is good that the building's on the lot line. It was built to the lot line, so we couldn't plant behind it. It's built to the lot line.
Yeah, okay, that was not clear on the previous set of drawings. It looks like there's some distance from the lot line to the back of the building. So that, yeah, wasn't clear, but we also know that there's kind of a limited tree pit width. So if you only have a foot, there's not going to be a tree. So that was the other thing. Yeah, okay, good thing.
Nothing there. And then next we can talk about the trash enclosure. Andy, would you like to help discuss this one? I, I think you asked to put it over here with the number one parking spot, right?
Yeah, or actually that other area that's called existing, and I can't see what it says, something and sell, oh, it's a trap door, so that would block.
Yeah, so we can't put it there. You wouldn't have access to the.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I misread that, okay.
But the problem with that, and I guess Andy can keep discussing it, is we would lose a parking space there.
So, so that little planter thing that is, was originally intended to sort of decorate against what I guess was thought of as a residential use, even though it's not. What if it was? So let me, let's see, if the fence that goes to the trap door to the cellar were moved back and you still maintain like a three foot clear in somehow, and you install the trash enclosure thing like around there, would there be room to clear for just a work? It seems like that trap door is not a fire regress. It's just a convenience asset access to the cellar, right?
That's correct. It's a, it's a Bilco door that leads down to the cellar.
Right, so if, and I don't know what the dimension is from the, or maybe it says, actually, I just can't see it. The, the mention from the back of that wall to the property line, the, I don't want to say north, it's like the west north, northwest corner direction. So top and bottom of page, that distance. I don't know if there is enough room to fit both the trash enclosure and enough room for whatever happens to go down into the cellar, but maybe the trash enclosure could go kind of in that spot. And then with a, just a little bit of a planter on the street face on eighty fourth street to conceal it a little bit, something like that.
Um, yeah, we could take a look into possibly relocating it there. I mean, if we did, I think they'd try to want to keep it as a chain link. Just, it's not a residential, as you noted, the adjacent. I think chain link would be okay, especially if we're gonna put gates in that get to access to the Bilco doors in the back. But that's something we can look at, see the spacing and try to make, like, of course, maintain the parking stall at the same time, because we don't want to lose parking, so.
Right, understood. Yeah, take a look at doing something like that. But when you say chain link, what I'm, you know, my reason for not liking chain link is because it gets wrecked so easily. So when you have a parking space there, the, the bumper of the car smashes into the chain link and bends it. And then it, it just looks terrible. So it's not, so the masonry enclosure thing is, uh, is one way around it. It's not the only solution that exists for trash enclosures. But the whole idea is to not make it look, not make it something that easily kind of decays, you know?
Understood. Perhaps we could put a proposal wheel stop in that stall or something, or even a bollard, if, as long as the gate's clear or something, maybe not a bollard. Something, something that would satisfy that. We'll take a look at it, so.
But I mean, the issue is also we're now moving trash essentially to the street line, which is on, it's not, so the immediate use is commercial, but residents walk down the sidewalk, right? So they shouldn't be looking at trash. That's why I'm saying some landscaping right up at that corner that conceals it. That's why I keep saying, pull it back into that recessed area to the extent you can and still gain access to the Bilco doors. And I, I don't know what the dimensions are or anything, so I actually, this is just kind of ideas without knowing more.
Yeah, it looks like from the, um, that rear little part of the building there, I guess it's about six and a half feet approximately between the property line and that where it bends back for the building there, so.
Okay.
And then.
The other part of the question is, so you lose a parking space, like what, how is that parking spot actually used? Yeah, how is that parking spot actually used? Because it's not the A D A access, is it? And it's not the cars waiting service because it's not enough, right?
Well, it is, it is indicated as for any cars waiting service. I mean, I know it's not enough, but I think that's, that's predominantly what they use it for. I know.
Wait, wait, wait. So what's the thing that's, that thing is called the existing dumpster? Okay. Well, what about using where the existing dumpster is and putting parking there? Then you would replace that with that, switch that, those two out.
It's, that's a possibility. We can definitely look at that and see what, what we can do with it.
Okay. That might be the easiest solution, but then landscaping along eighty fourth street to conceal the enclosure. And the enclosure then would need to be more, more attractive. Can't just be a chain link fence with slats. It would look terrible. Okay.
So, and then I guess I, I should have brought this up earlier, but if for the mixed residential commercial space, we could also look into how that residential is used. Is it used in is someone permanently there or is it just used to support the animal hospital? Because that could answer if it's really residential or not.
Well, if someone's sleeping there, that's called residential. If no one's sleeping there, then it's because there's animals in there, you know, that kind of thing. So
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you can't, you can't distinguish, a person who sleeps and has a bedroom, that's a residential use, right?
We've had before, we've had a case, and I remember this case, where they had an artist studio up top, but the, the artist only occasionally used the space if they had like some show or something. It wasn't a permanent residence.
Okay, so, okay, so that's a different thing. If it's not actually used for residence, since it's not really a residence in that case, right?
I mean, I'm just saying we could ask how it's used and get a better understanding of that. I know it says residence on C, the C of O, but it might be worth.
All right, but let's, what happens? Okay.
Yeah, I'm not gonna say it's, yeah, not. And then lighting, we can look into those numbers. I look, take another look at them based on your comments.
This. So then we were talking about landscaping along the perimeter, the same perimeter that's adjacent to those residents, right?
Yeah, so that's why I also brought up, if, you know, it's a permanent residence or not, what is the situation there?
Okay.
And then, because the previously approved plans, as you could see, didn't, didn't.
Right, and that's why I was asking, and I wasn't sure why, was it because it's all still in the seeds of this district? And so, you know, and that convenience store would be allowed as of right in the city? Or is it because, and, and that's why the board wasn't focusing on it? Or is it because they actually thought it was a commercial use next door in spite of the C O? I don't know, it doesn't say anything on the resolution about it.
And might be a little tricky to find out, but if we do, we can find something, we'll provide more information. And then Commissioner Chanda had some comments about putting in more parking on eighty fourth, and I, can she clarify that a little bit for us?
Sure, um, so if you look at the photos that you, that has been submitted and also Google Map, there are vehicles that are parked. There are at least three vehicles at any given time that are parked next to that sign.
Like here?
There? Yes, yes, yes.
And, and what are they? Are they parallel to eighty fourth or?
They're perpendicular.
Perpendicular, okay.
And if they are, whichever way they are parked, they would be blocking the the accessway either to eighty fourth or to the flat land. So and it seems since it is being used for parking and there is a demand or a need for, I mean, there's a need for it, you should look into this and see how the site can accommodate the additional parking need without them encroaching onto the side yard, because if you look at the photos, they are encroaching into the side yard. These parts, parked vehicles are encroaching slightly into the sidewalk. So figure out a way how to contain them within the site and provide a mechanism whereby they can be contained.
Okay.
And that's why it's suggested like a low, low knee wall, same height as the, where the signage is, you know, kind of continue that so that no vehicle will then park onto the sidewalk or will hang over onto the sidewalk.
Okay. And then the other comment I heard was about the vacuum. We can look where else we could potentially move that vacuum.
Okay, because I'm pretty sure that's audible.
Want to just see if it's on the, it's not indicated on the previously approved plan, so never mind that.
It, it's in the existing one, yeah?
Yeah, it's just, I was looking.
You only have one, and you don't have et, etour? It's all included in one?
Looks that way.
Okay.
Just taking another look, yeah. Okay. And then. And then for trash, I didn't mention, we will look at how much perishable trash we create and we will find a solution if necessary. We'll get back to you on perishable trash.
So you know, I don't know if you were aware of that case. I think it might have been Jake Goldstein's case. It was, uh, might have been a yeshiva with a dormitory building in it. And they produced an enormous amount of trash because everyone was living there. And then there's another one, I, that one I remember, six hundred McDonald Avenue, where it's a very large girls' school. And they also had an enormous amount of trash and what they had was this compactor thing that sat outside in the yard. And it seemed to really deal with all of their trash requirements. And so that, that's another way of doing it where maybe it's very durable, super durable, right? So you don't, so the kind of the fence and the dumpster thing is no longer needed. So anyway, it's worth looking into for situations like this. It might end up being a better solution. And they, they, I think they come in lots of different kinds of sizes. So, you know, like the small dumpsters or a really large dumpster like that. I don't know.
And then we will update the zoning chart to say the appropriate amount of parking spaces. We'll provide a maneuverability plan. And I think that was all the comments.
Okay. And if you could look into that nutty sentence about signage.
Oh, and then signage, yeah, so. We heard about referring to the D O B. All these signs are D O B approved, correct, Andy? They're D O B approved signs.
Yes, they are.
No, no, it has more to do with the language and the special permit.
Yeah, yeah, understood. And we've debated this time and time again, because the language of the special permit does change you to a hundred and fifty square feet for the whole zoning law.
Right.
This was previously a variance with a different requirement.
No, but even with a ver, never mind the variance, as of right in a, what is this, a C two, three?
Yeah, so as of right in a C two, it's not, it's, you get each, the, it, it, it's permitted. Our signage is permitted in a C two, so that's what we currently have, but it's not, but the language of the seventy three to eleven is totally different than what's required just in a C two.
Right, so I was thinking, um, maybe Mr. Palatnick has had experience with this in the past and you could speak to him about it. Or, I don't know, whatever, ask around, because we're trying to understand like how the board has handled this and, um, or maybe you've had interactions with D O B about how, how D O B's viewed that section in the special permit or, frankly, I don't know, but any clarity on this from your side would be helpful, because we'll, we'll do our own, but it's, it's just such a bizarre concept, like why would they want to punish you if you get a special permit? I, I don't, I don't get it. So anyway.
Understood.
Okay. Anybody else? Anything else?
I don't think so.
Okay, any other comments from commissioners? Otherwise, we can go to the public. Can you take this off the screen?
Stop sharing your screen, sorry.
Thank you. So the case we're.
No, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah. So the case we're currently discussing is twenty twenty thirty six B Z eighty four oh one Flatlands Avenue in Brooklyn. If you wish to speak on this matter, you can dial in by calling six four six five five eight eight six five six. You'll be prompted to enter the webinar I D number, which is nine seven zero five six four six three seven seven one pound. You will then be asked to enter participant I D number, which you will ignore and just press pound. When you are in the Zoom room, you can press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute to speak. If you are in the Zoom room already, please raise your hand. Okay. So while we wait to see if anyone is gonna call in on this, um, how much time do you need?
I think we need a few months because we need to discuss with the client about the trash enclosure and our options for that, so.
Okay, so what's a few months mean, three?
Andy, does that sound like enough?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Okay, okay.
Um. Yeah, oh, real quick, if I may say, at the beginning of the, of the review session, Commissioner, you mentioned that there was an objection letter issued on this case. It didn't say anything. Would it be possible for at least to get a copy of that if it's something you need to address?
Yeah, it's from one person. I could tell you what it, which one. But yeah, sure, um, whose case is this?
Ben Roy.
Ben Roy, can you send Elise a copy? Is Ben Roy on here? A copy of the, hi, Ben Roy. Of the objection letter. I think it's in the testimony folder. It's just one of the forms with the box I checked.
Okay, I will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, good, indeed, we will. Okay, so I mo, I noted three months to submit and thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is twenty twenty one forty four B Z thirty two oh four Bedford Avenue, Brooklyn.
Okay.
Jay and Louis Garfinkel are in the room. Jay, can you do the?
Yeah, yeah, how are you? Yep.
Okay, what about Mr. Garfinkel? Louis?
Hi.
Hi, can you do the panelist? Press the panelist key. So we're trying to get you accepted as a panel, there.
Okay, unmuted. Okay, now my video, okay.
There you go.
Yeah.
There you go, nice to see you, Mr. Garfinkel, how are you, sir?
Very good.
Good, okay, raise your right hands. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to the board member questions?
Yes, I do, I affirm, okay.
Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Jake Goldstein for the applicant with Louis Garfinkel, the architect of record. We heard the review session questions or comments, and a lot of them are, are requests for clarification, string dimensions to compare the existing versus the retained walls, clarification of the front wall retention. We'll provide the full attic plan with retention and horizontal sections per manager's comments.
You know, but, but when you say horizontal section, I want to make sure Mr. Garfinkel understands what I mean. When you do a plan, you're taking a section horizontally at a certain level. So I'm saying cut through the floor at four feet and then you're looking down, because what you've done is you seem to be cutting through the floor at like six feet or seven feet, so you're not bringing into play all that's going on below it. And I need to understand what potentially is floor area higher than five feet so that we can be clear about what's floor area. So that's why I say cut it four feet all the way across. So we know what so we have a better sense of what's going on on the roof.
Which section or which drawing?
So it, no, 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 so it's a floor plan. That's why I knew then I needed to say this again.
No, 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 I know, I know.
When we look at the attic floor plan.
Okay, it's the attic that you're.
Your horizontal section on your attic floor plan seems to have been taken about like seven feet off the gra, off the floor.
Okay.
Lower the section of your horizontal to like four feet off the floor. So it takes in as much of the, what's going on above the joists at the, of the second floor ceiling as possible.
Okay.
And then we'll know like what's the height above the joists to the joists of the roof, of the, of the roof. And then we'll have an idea of what the actual, as they say, floor to floor heights are in the, in, in the attic, okay?
Okay. As part of that, we'll also provide the floor area calculation diagram for that floor.
Right.
I understand the, the commissioners and mandatory made comments regarding the weight of the lines being hard to tell what's retained and what's proposed. We can clarify and play with the weights to make a, to clarify what's being proposed for retention and what's proposed for new. And then we will clarify in the plans also no E F S, and we'll clarify the finished materials on the plans with regards to.
And not just no E F S, if it's stucco, then say it's it's lab on, on, with, with plaster or stucco on lab or something like that. So, and then parentheses, no E F S. Okay, so we know what the material is. I'm afraid for plastics and stuff that looks terrible in five years.
Okay. We can work on the, on the pitch per Vice Char Chanda at the I'll show Mr. Garfinkel what I believe it is, the pitch at the void, and there's a void between the roof of the, or the.
Yeah, maybe we could display the, can someone share their screen? Maybe Nazir's always so fast at this. Did you, you have the?
Let me know if you're looking at my.
Oh, yeah, that's right. So now just go to the section.
So. I, I believe it's this portion that Vice Chair was talking about.
Right.
Yes.
So we can, we can close that up or just make it reduce, remove the, the void over here to lower the pitch.
No, no, no.
No, more than that, actually, not just eliminate that, but also make the pitch more gradual so that it pitches further away from the rear lot line.
Because what it's doing is.
From, start from over here somewhere.
Right.
Yeah, it would say go as far back. I, I think since you're not going to use that space. Yeah, I mean, if you're not going to use that space at all, why have it? So you, you can pitch it as, as gently as possible to get it closer to the last piece of the wall of the attic, which is, I think, behind the closet.
Right, so a very, yeah, a very gradual. This is a super steep pitch, so the opposite of steep.
Right, okay.
Okay.
And then finally, there were comments regarding the, the rear yard study and the street scape montage. So the rear yard study, I can document the floors.
Yes.
How many floors at this, at the rear yard, and the squeak, streetscape will, will put in the proposed building.
Right.
So I think those were all the comments.
I think so too. Does Commissioner Shad have a comment? It seems like you wanted to say something.
No.
No? Okay, um. Rear study, okay, yes, all right, thank you. So let's go to the public. For the case we're currently discussing, sorry, just wanted to check something. I thought you wanted an axial, um.
That's the next case.
Oh, okay, sorry, that's what I was looking at. The case we're currently discussing is twenty twenty one forty four B Z thirty two oh four Bedford Avenue, Brooklyn. Should you wish to call in, six four six five five eight eight six five six. You're prompted to enter the webinar I D number, which is nine seven zero five six four six three seven seven one pound. You will then be prompted to enter the participant I D number, which you do not have to do, just press pound. Once you're in the Zoom room, please press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute. If you are already in the Zoom room, please raise your hand. Um, I just think I need to just check the drawing again, whether the site plan makes clear about the side yard, the four foot, seven and, four point seven foot side yard is a substandard side yard, right?
Yes.
So please make it clear that that's, that the required side yard is whatever it is. And so because that the extension at the rear requires a side yard waiver for that.
So just put a note, like a note with the section and required side yard?
So on the site plan, you can, we have an indicator of what the required side yard, rear yard, front yards are. And this doesn't show. and this doesn't show anything. So you're not seeing like what the waiver is, right? So indicate on the site plan what the essentially the as-of-right conditions are. That would be true for the prior cases as well, or yeah, the next case.
So we had a chart next to the floor area in the lower left corner.
No, not a chart. On the drawing.
Actually mark it on the on the site, okay, which says existing. Required five feet per section, whatever, zero.
Exactly. And you do the same for the rear yard, so that way you see what the sort of the scope of the waiver.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, good. All right. Um I don't think anyone called in. Okay, so how much time to do this?
Louis?
Two weeks.
I usually need a couple days after that, so let's say three weeks.
So so in terms of that, um both to Mr. Garfinkel and to Mr. Goldstein, please make sure everything is consistent from one drawing to the next. That's what the retainage drawing, when you look at the retained amount of wall, and then you look at the proposed, and you don't see those two match, this is always my problem, right? So um please make sure they match and that um I, it's easy to see the dimension of the repaint, of the existing wall on the existing drawings, so that I can find it easily on the retained wall and the proposed drawing, okay? Same dimension.
Thank you. So I'm marking three weeks.
All right.
Okay, the next case is twenty twenty-one forty-five BZ seventeen fourteen East Twenty-Seven Street, Brooklyn. Having anyone else, Jay?
Just me and Louis.
Raise your right hands. Do affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board, and to respond honestly to honestly to board member questions.
Yes, I do. I affirm.
Sorry, apologies. I was just going to open up. So uh good afternoon, Jay Goldstein for the applicants. With me again is Louis Garfinkel for the project architect. So the um we heard the board's comments at review session today. The comment regarding providing an Axiom just to show that we don't penetrate the sky exposure plane, so we can I see we provided two, but we didn't provide the rear, the rear view for the Axiom. But just in terms of the the rear yard setback, it starts, my my understanding from uh Louis, which he can speak to as well, is twenty-three six thirty-two, which which discusses rear setbacks, starts for an R three district at thirty-three feet above the base plane. Our property is at twenty-five feet above the base plane, so therefore the sky exposure plane would not be an issue. Louis can confirm that.
I think it was actually that twenty, was it twenty-five, forty-five? It was twenty seven feet.
Twenty-seven?
Yeah. It goes from, if you look on the A eleven, the EL, you know, it's forty-five point two, it's the top of our building, and the base plane is seventeen point sixty-four, so that's um twenty-seven, maybe twenty-eight feet, so the whole rear extension is under thirty-three feet.
So what are those dashlines for? That make it look like your whole project is out of compliance with height and setback. Why, what are those dashlines for? On your elevations? If you go to, I'm just gonna go to.
Yeah.
That's the confusion. I didn't, I'm not doing analysis. I see your elevations, and I'm like, wait a minute, why is that?
Those dashlines are for are for the uh max building height.
Well, so it's showing you.
Yeah, well, whenever, we need to show that where there's an envelope. So if we had more floor area, we could build a bigger attic.
Hold, hold, wait a second before you say that, because it's not about the end, it's not it's not about if you had more floor area you could build. It's showing, if you go to the rear um wall elevation, um hold on a second, I'm trying to get there. Rear wall elevation.
Eight-eight.
Eight-eight.
Yeah, eight-eight. That section of the roof is penetrating the triangle. So what, if that's the envelope, you're penetrating it.
No, so the envelope is three dim- it goes in three directions. So if you look at A ten, if you look at A ten, it shows that that piece that you just mentioned is within the envelope on the side.
Okay, so that's something wacky about how it's being depicted. I think you shouldn't have those triangles and elevation.
No problem.
Because instead, just provide the wire diagram in Axiom to show that the building falls within your wire. Because these things, also on the side elevation, it makes it look like that little cupola thing is noncompliant, but that for one, it's existing, so whatever it is, it is. But um it makes it look like it's a noncompliant condition, right? So if it's if it's complying, and it's just badly demonstrated in an elevation system like this, just don't use those dashlines on elevation, and just use it in your Axioms.
Right, well, the DOB always, when we do these uh like an R four zones or this zone R three dash two, they always ask us to draw that, but and yes, plan examiners do point out, if they're not familiar, they go, why, why, why is it sticking out? You know, you're right, the Axiom A sixteen spells it all out clearly, it shows, yeah.
So that's the thing. So the Axiom spells it out. Just flip your Axiom around so we see it from the back.
Sure, okay.
Then we're done.
Right, okay. The only other comment I think was the balcony, which will reduce in scale to a Juliet balcony.
Yes. Romeo or Juliet, and I think it was mostly Juliet up in the balcony.
I never heard it before. I'm just parroting what you said earlier.
Really? Really? You never heard?
I, once you say it, I understand, but I'm not, you know.
No, it's it's actually a formal term for those little things, where you go out, it could be Rapunzel also, but I think that was more like a small window. So.
Rapunzel was a power also, it wasn't.
Rapunzel was on the top of the castle tower.
Yeah, so it was through a small win- oh, yeah, so it maybe.
There was on, there was an arched window.
Yeah.
Come over. We play it every night at five o'clock.
Seriously? Every night?
My kids love it. My daughter loves it. I have two little princesses. That's it.
Too much of a good thing, you know?
That's what it is. Okay.
All right, uh let's go to the public.
The case we are currently discussing is twenty twenty-one forty-five BZ seventeen fourteen East Twenty-Seven Street, Brooklyn. Should you wish to call in, it is six four six five five eight eight six five six. You'll be instructed into the webinar ID number, which is nine seven zero five six four six three seven seven one pound. You will then be instructed to enter the participant ID, which you don't have to do, just press pound. Once you are in the Zoom room, press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute. If you are already in the Zoom room, raise your hand.
I think she's got it. I think that's a line in the book. By Joe, I think she's.
By George, by Joe, I think she's got it. That's my fair lady.
Yes, that's it. Um, I'll let you sing the rest. Okay, so um I forgot to ask a question of Mr. Garfinkel. If you look at the rear elevation, independent of the dash line that confuses us, there's this like abrupt cutoff on the roof. Why doesn't the roof follow some sort of a slope there?
Because because that extension is one foot seven, but in, you know, wider than the rest of the building. So in order to keep the ridge the same, the same line as the rest of the uh existing roof, uh we're making like kind of like a dormer piece to stick out. Otherwise, it'd have to, if they, to do what you're asking, we'd have to move center the ridge, and then and then the ridges would be off. So it's like, a lot of times, the framers call me, call me back and say that, you know, they want to do it this way.
Okay, so I'm just trying to see in your Axiom. Well, you know what, maybe.
A ten, that dormer at the rear.
What?
On A ten, you'll see the dormer at the rear, which is what he's talking about.
Then also, I think.
And then on the roof, then you can see the slope.
So you know what part of the problem is that because we don't have the Axiom that faces the other way?
Okay.
You don't, you don't see how it resolves. I see it from your Axiom in on A sixteen, but then I I can't tell what's going on in the front, that there's something odd. I I think it's just, you know, this is the limitation on elevations, where they flatten all these things that aren't flat, right? So sometimes wh- when I used to do this for a living, I would show little arrows, indicate I'm looking at a slope. And that way I would know that there would be a way for me to know that this is actually not a vertical condition, it's a sloping condition, for example.
On A six.
Madam Chair, A fifteen, um I think has the A fifteen has the Axiom from the other side. Is it?
No, 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 it's not what you're looking for. No, I'm looking for the Axiom that reveals the rear wall. Okay. Yeah, we need it anyway because of the sky exposure plane stuff, so then we'll see it there. Okay, that's all.
Right. But I think A sixteen does show, yeah, explains what your question is. On A sixteen, it shows.
Shows it it from the side, but I also want to see what ha- what.
Yeah, no problem, you know.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Good. So um I think those were the questions, right? Yeah, sorry, I'm just checking. Wait, somebody in or not? Okay. And I don't disagree with the other commissioners that it's such a modest addition, twenty feet on, twenty-foot rear yard on both is um okay, but I would like to hear a little more about why that should be okay.
Right, so I forgot to mention it, but so the reason in this situation that we went with this as opposed to what the board is commonly sees with the twenty feet and then a setback at twenty-five feet, like the case before, is that the existing building over here is only sixteen feet wide. So usually you'll see with other houses that they blow out two walls, a side wall and a back wall, so that they get a much larger footprint. Over here, the only, we're only going because of the the width of the lot, we're only going towards the rear, and therefore the only way to have a meaningful enlargement would be to be at twenty feet on both floors. And if you look at it, all we're really doing is enlarging the kitchen and putting in a master bedroom.
Right.
It's really a very modest task, as as the board mentioned.
So you know, and I think if we go back to what I used to say at the very beginning of learning about these special permits, that the original reason for these special permits was to allow modest enlargements to existing little houses. That's what this is actually doing, as opposed to other ones where we lose the whole house, it gets subsumed into this gigantic thing, right? So this is actually much more in keeping with the original intent, I think, even if it's two stories, so. Okay.
Appreciate it.
So um how much time?
So uh Louis, it's up to you, but I would ask before we get to that, it, seeing that there's no um we're we're only just clarifying the 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 plans with the Axiom, but it it's clear that it's not going to penetrate the sky exposure. Um I was wondering if we can have a close on this case.
We could have a close, but only if you first tell me how much time, because sometimes I close before I ask, and then it's confusing, because then I'm talking about a case that I shouldn't be talking about, because we closed, so.
Louis, you're up.
So um I guess uh make it three weeks, because then Jay, you only had a week, it'll be four weeks, because this way, now we got two jobs to work on.
Well, can you, can you do that in in the time period for the two jobs? That's the question.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay, okay, three weeks. All right, three weeks to submit. Good, all right. So guess what? Motion to close.
There, Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Charachanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Attley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Okay, all right. Thank you, everybody.
Very much.
Bye.
Have a good day, everybody.
Okay, this concludes the public hearing for February eighth, twenty twenty-two.
Yay. Have a good rest, everybody. That was a hard, a hard job for these two days. Okay.